Welcome to the Cohasset Board of Sleckman meeting, Tuesday, May seventh. We are in the Sleckman's office at Town Hall forty-one Highland Ave. Rule call, call to order.
President Paul Schubert.
Dan Kennedy here.
Jack Niley here, Steve Goll right here one more time.
And Kevin McCarthy will be joining us later today, he has a work obligation. The first order of business, oh, is the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First up is public comment, if anybody in the audience has a matter that is not on the agenda, now is your time to come up. Here are none, we will move on to the police fire station repair, we have an update on that.
You'll leave me out there by myself, Brian?
Welcome, would you introduce yourself for the record?
So, Fire Chief Robert Sylvia, forty-four Ellen Street and sixty-five Forest Avenue.
In your, in your colleague?
Right.
Joyce, Director Public Work.
I know how you feel, Bob, it happens to me all the time.
I have a tendency to run on, not that you've ever noticed that. The, so, it started, the issues down to the firehouse, couple of things going on down there. The first one was obviously the leaky roof that we all know about, that we dealt with at town meetings, so we can get that straightened out. That caused a couple of issues that, that we'll touch on in just a second. The second thing that happened was, again, the age of the building, the building's almost sixty years old. We had a little bit of a problem with, with the sewage backup. And it was discovered because there was a bad smell, and when they went looking, they found eighteen inches of gray water living in a crawl space underneath the station.
When was this?
This was back on the twenty-second of March. So, the, working with facilities and Brian and all the staff, they contacted the plumber. The plumber came in, he's the one that actually discovered, while looking for the bad smell, he's the one that discovered the, the issue with the gray water. So, there's a broken vent pipe. They contracted on the twenty-fifth, or twenty-third, the contractor, the company came in and they pumped everything out, cleaned everything up, steam cleaned everything, disinfected everything, and in fact, that crawl space, in hindsight, is probably the cleanest place in the entire building now. So, that was all taken care of. On the twenty-fifth, the health agent came down, she checked everything, so we were working very closely with Pam. And Pam came down, checked everything out, and assured us that there were really no problems. So, that the building was healthy, there wasn't, there really wasn't an issue. But, at the same time, we decided to do some air testing to make sure that there wouldn't be, there weren't any problems. So, the air testing came back, after we got everything remediated and everything else, the, the air testing came back two weeks ago. And when it came back, we discovered that, in fact, there were mold spores in the building. So, we went in search of, and Pam, Pam's note to me, they tested ten different areas in the, in the department. And they found mold in three places, three predominant places. One was a bathroom, which the water from the bad roof had leaked down and created that issue. One was a janitor's closet, I should say four places, janitor's closet adjacent to that bathroom. A crawl space underneath the building where there was some cardboard boxes that were stored that had gotten wet because, again, the leak in the roof, which, again, grew mold. And the last place was an improperly installed through-the-wall air conditioner, which had created some mold in the wall. So, again, working with Nick Barati at facilities and with Brian and everybody else, it turns out that Nick is, in fact, has mold remediation certification. So, we're lucky that we have him on staff. He came in and said, okay, this is what we need to do. We contracted with one company, Nick was not very comfortable with their qualifications. So, we then switched gears and contracted with a second company. The good news is, they came in last Friday, and again on Monday, and there were no mold sources left in the building. Everything's been remediated. That being said, now we need to repair some stuff. We have to put up some sheet rock, we have to do everything else. That's not gonna happen until we get the roof fixed. Doesn't make any sense to put the sheet rock back up and have it get wet again. So, we believe that the leaky roof was more in the wintertime when the drain on the roof froze, am I probably, am I good with that?
Yeah, yeah, there's some flashing issues and, and some old shingles where the transition from the rubber membrane roof, basically, the dormitory has a rubber membrane roof flat, and that transitions to a shingle roof that's over the front offices.
So, the good news is all of that's been remediated, we're good with all of that. We still have some, we still have some work we have to get done, we need to get some cleaning finished up. And again, we need to put everything back together once the, once the roof is finished. Brian's already contracted with, with the roofer. As you can imagine, because of the month of April, twenty-one out of thirty days it rained, roofers and outside painters are so far behind the people right now that we're not quite sure exactly when they're gonna be able to mobilize.
Is this on like one side of the building?
It's all on the, so this is, we're just talking about the firehouse at the moment, 'cause we also did mold testing through the rest of the police station. And there were two spots in the police station that actually came up positive also. One was their garage, because of a bad flat roof. And one was a area in the basement that had water issues in the past, and again, there was some cardboard down there. So, when the cardboard got wet, it grew mold. All the mold that was found, I can just, I can talk about the mold that was found on the firehouse side of it. There was no black mold, there was no toxic black mold, it was mold. Pam assures us that, that, and I don't know if I printed her, what she sent me today, did you print that, Brian, by any chance?
I have the ASAP version.
Okay, so, what she sent me today was very simply that the mold that was found was fairly common. It's common throughout the outside and inside, it's found in all sorts of different places. What they do when they do the mold testing, as I discovered, is they do an outside test to get the ba, the basic background level of mold. Mold is everywhere, we walk outside, it's everywhere, it's no different than pollen, so it's everywhere. So, then they, they compare that to the samples that they get inside, and if they, if they're higher than normal, then they start to look to see exactly what they were. They tested ten places in the firehouse, as I mentioned, and came up with it in the bathroom, as I mentioned, the areas around the bathroom, 'cause the mold had migrated through the air, and that one back dormitory room, and the, the area underneath the building is as far as the crawl space. So, without rambling on, the good news is, everything is, everything's been remediated at this point. We feel pretty, we feel pretty comfortable that we're good to go. After all the cleaning is done, all the cleanup is done, we'll retest to make sure that, that we've covered all our bases. But, that's pretty much the extent of it, as things go.
So, what's the plan for the roof?
So, we've, we've done the procurement, we have five quotes, we're going with the lowest qualified, which is a local roofer we've used before. We've given them the notice to proceed, actually, the day of, after town meeting, and we're just waiting on the schedule. And that's, you know, they're, they're basically stripping that flat roof down to there. So, we need a good stretch of dry weather to, to do that, so we're waiting on that schedule.
Was this something we had queued up to do anyway?
It was on the capital, yeah, so, so basically, it was on the capital list of items, and this just emphasizes that you need to do that.
Just accelerated the start date?
Absolutely.
Okay.
At the same time, I've been meeting with, with Brian and with Nick, and Mark's on vacation right now, we'll be in with Mark. But, we are addressing some other issues that we're, that we're looking at down at the firehouse. As I mentioned, the building is sixty years old, it needs a little TLC, and we're working on it. So, we've got some plans from other things that we're looking at that may be able to take care of some other issues down there. Nothing that pertains to a building not being healthy or clean. Obviously, we wouldn't provide anything but a clean, healthy building for the environment, for everybody to work in, so that's what we're working on.
Any questions?
I guess, is there any pathologic mold to humans that was there?
So, according to what Pam said, everything that came back is, for lack of a better word, common mold. So, i- if you're sensitive to it, it's no different than having sensitivities to any other allergen.
But there's no?
But nothing there that was toxic in any way, shape, or form.
Donovan?
I know that building intimately, I pass.
Do you have one separate, Steve?
No, I had a thorough explanation, I understand it, so.
Just, just an update, appreciate it, you know.
Yeah, there was just a series of things, we just wanted to keep everybody on loop on it. The fact, and the, the good news that we actually have, as we continue to up, upstaff facilities, we have Nick as a man with, who fortunately wears many certifications.
That's great.
So, we talked about a Tyvek suit, the whole nine yards, I don't know if they had to do the Tyvek suit, but I know they did whatever they had to do to get work done.
Okay.
Uh, we're becoming all too ex, Brian's crews are becoming all too expert in this stuff, uh, but hopefully.
Deferred maintenance.
Yeah, so hopefully, we'll get a little bit ahead of some of that stuff, uh, so. And we, we actually.
How much for the roof?
How much for the roof?
It's twelve thousand.
For a roof?
No, in fact, we.
So, we, we started getting bids all through winter, and we, you know, went from twelve up to how much higher number.
But it turned out, it's a small enough job that a lot of people could compete for it, you know, 'cause, 'cause of the threshold, so the, the good, the good news for us, we have about seven, six, seven, eight people holding on.
Yeah, we, we, we have five quotes and solicitors, is that all right?
Good price.
Yeah.
A rubber roof, that's good.
How, how old was the original?
This one was done, uh, oh, three or so. And when George did the doors, right, didn't they do the roof?
Yeah, when they did, they did the other addition, so.
I think, I think the roof, the, uh.
Was that the ninety?
Yeah, I think the roof was older.
Yeah.
So, you, you generally get, you get a twenty-year life on a rubber membrane roof, and then your, your joints are where the failure points are. And this is, this has got a lot of puncture wounds, I don't know if it's seagull, uh, seagulls eating clams or wounds, but, um.
Clams. One would hope it's not seagulls eating clams that could puncture a membrane roof.
Well.
Or it'd be big clams.
The roof was shovel up at times.
Have you been to a, have you been to a wild bird clam party yet?
In, in the way, the flashing was a little bit low, so when the snow, the snow drifts in the wintertime, it goes through the flashing above.
Okay.
All right, thank you both, very much.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Thanks, Chief, thanks, Brian.
Next up is an event permit application for the Cohasset Farmers Market, Michelle.
It's a hard act to follow.
There you go.
For us, but we got a lot of hard acts tonight. It's the A-team on, um, the seventh of May, welcome.
Thank you.
Could you just introduce yourself for the record and then give us kind of the lowdown on the farmers market?
Michelle Hubley, the A-team King Street Cohasset, I'm the manager of Cohasset Farmers Market, deemed appropriately by my inheritance of, of rights, yes. Glad to be here for your last meeting, so.
So, dates and kind of the.
So, the market starts on June sixth, it runs every Thursday, from June sixth until October tenth, except for Fourth of July. We are not gonna push that one, we're not gonna compete. Um, the second market on June thirteenth, we will be moving from the common, as we do every year, to the Saint Stevens, um, just below the Saint Stevens Church, where they've allowed us to hold the interim market while the strawberry parfa, uh, strawberry parfait, the strawberry festival, um, and the arts festival.
Who's dating herself in town?
Yeah, I know. Uh, the arts festival, um, the weekend, yeah. Um, same routine as always, we have six staff on the common, um, at almost all times, uh, four committee members and two, um, assistants from the watch program, with other people helping us. Um, we have started with our signs, do not park, handicap parking, keep off the grass, um, and likewise. I know that Michael was at a facilities meeting just last week or the week before, so he will be testing the, um, we'll just be testing the layout before the market starts, but we don't anticipate anything different, um. One more thing, oh, yeah, it will be hopefully in, um, by the time the market starts, we'll have about thirty-five, thirty-six vendors, of which six are youth vendors, again, this year, we have our youth vendor program. And we gratefully, um, uh, share the common at six P M. with the Cohasset Rec Series. So, that starts the end of June, I believe, the first of July, that goes for about six or seven weeks, so that's always been, that's the only other same time, same thing next year, um, thing that happens at the end of the market for about seven weeks, um, yeah.
Chris, do you know what the setup's gonna be for the, the stage? 'Cause I know they've moved, I mean, most of it was by the.
Yeah, it, it kinda depended on the night and the needs, um, there were a couple of times they had to do it over here just 'cause of the way the electrical or something worked.
It's big.
Yeah, but they tend to try to set it over here.
Okay.
It just works, it also depends on how active the market was that day, 'cause it, as that gets torn down, it can sometimes not sync well with the beginning of the concert, so, um, um, I'd also, they, they historically have, the last couple of years, they've had a little bin that equivalent, like, they've stored the second area of the parking lot, it's not for spaces in the back corner. They keep their, their pod back there, and we've, and we've had no, no problem with that.
We'd like to request that again.
Okay.
Yes, and we also keep the hot dog cart, the famous hot dog cart by the storage.
All right, any questions?
Yeah, move to approve.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Seconds.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Hi, thanks, Michelle.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Michelle.
Great job, always.
It's Marcus, thanks.
I always race home from work to get here by five-thirty. Okay, um, next up is a public hearing, let me just get the notice in front of me. Um, public hearing notice, the Cohasset Board of Sleckman acting as the local liquor licensing authority will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, May seventh, twenty nineteen, at seven oh five P M. in the Sleckman's office, Town Hall forty-one Highland Ave. The hearing is to consider the application of A and S Restaurants LLC DBA Atlantica Restaurant for a change of manager and for an alteration, extension of the licensed premises located at forty-four, forty-six Border Street. The proposed manager is Richard DeAngelis. The applicants are also requesting to create an outdoor patio seating area in the location of the existing small parking lot adjacent to the old Salt House. The proposed patio will be approximately seventeen hundred square feet and will comply with the A B C C patio guidelines. The public is invited to offer public input on the proposed in writing in advance of the public hearing or in person at the hearing. And I will open the hearing and invite, um, whoever's here representing Atlantica and Mr. DeAngelis. Introduce yourself, hello, how are you here?
Good evening. Pierre Pratt from the Marblehead.
Yeah.
Richard DeAngelis.
Hi, welcome.
Hi, thanks for having me.
All right, you wanna sort of walk us through what the, you know, a little bit about Mr. DeAngelis, and, and he can speak, and then we'll talk about the proposed patio?
Sure thing, then, and Rich had joined the company a few weeks ago, uh, coming from a very experienced, high-volume place on the Cape, uh, where he had been, uh, working a few years as a, a main manager, uh, running the same type of operation of Atlantica. Um, and we still add like Henrik on the old license, Henrik Lichten, uh, and as we are just revisi, revisionating everything, we needed to, uh, to put Rich out as the manager of the operations there.
Okay, um, you wanna say something and tell us a little bit about your background and welcome?
Sure. Sure. Yeah, thanks again for having me, my name's Richard DeAngelis, um, I live in Ducksbury, ten years, married seventeen, three beautiful children, um, made it that way by way of marriage, grew up on the North Shore in Andover. Um, grew up playing hide and seek in the basements of restaurants, my dad's own multiple, he's seventy-seven years old and just retired a year ago. Just got back from Florida, and he's excited to come down and, and visit the property.
Great.
Um, I've worked alongside him, he's had, uh, every restaurant he's had has been successful, he worked along Charlie Sakis and the Back Bay Group, um, managed many, owned many, um, and then he was opening a restaurant in Newburyport, and I was, at the time, dating my then-girlfriend, now-wife. I said, I'm not gonna travel with you to Newburyport, although the martini jazz bar sounds wonderful, I'm gonna take a pass. Um, at the time, I was just out of college, um, ended up managing the front of the house over there, um, and bartending at the same time, had more cash in my pocket then than I do now.
Yeah.
And, um, then he had a car accident, and, um, he was unable to be there. So, I really got thrust into it, and I just realized how much I loved it, and it was still successful. My mom said, if you don't remove yourself from that property, I'm gonna remove you, the late nights, the, the, the long hours, it's just, it's not working out. Um, I stayed on board there with the new management, which I worked alongside and, and, and still to this day keep in touch with, and I'm going back fifteen-plus years, uh, maybe even a little bit more, um. My three hundred dollars a night tending bar went to about eighty after my dad left, so I decided to, uh, join a woman that was very nice at the bar. And, um, she said, I'm hiring for, um, some staff at a financial institution, I said, I'll give it, I've been in this, doing this for a long time. And, um, I ended up working for Melon Bank, which eventually merged with Bank of New York Melon, I was there for ten years, I loved it. Um, but I decided to go out to dinner with my wife, it was March, it was about ten degrees below zero. We went down to this new place called Fisherman's View and Sandwich. I apologized to her on the way down and said, we're gonna end up at the Olive Garden, 'cause we're on the Cape, it's gonna be closed, cold wind, and it was amazing. The energy there, live music, um, the bartenders were great, I ate buffalo cauliflower, which I don't normally eat, and it was delicious. And I had a heart-to-heart with her, and I just said, my passion's always been the restaurant business, and do I have your blessing and the family's blessing to get back into the industry if you'll have me? I sent them an email, five interviews later, they created an assistant general manager role for me. And when I gave my notice three weeks ago, there were some tears shed. Um, I visited there, my, my youngest is eight, and we had our, her first communion. Where Atlantica's not actively, uh, pushing out any amazing food, I said, we're going back to Fisherman's View. They rolled out the red carpet, it was sixteen of us, again, live music, same energy, and I do see, it's a very similar footprint. Um, we do a thousand to fifteen hundred people a day over there in the summer, um, very minimal to almost zero issues we've had as I've been there, I've been transparent, open line of communication between whether it was the police department, and I think I was there with all those people that go through, I think I've had to call the police two or three times, um, nothing came in the way but arrest. Um, I work closely with alcohol awareness, I just recertified myself, just to make sure I didn't miss anything as the tips certification, make sure the staff has it, um, work very closely with the town, I'm excited to be a part of this, um, and I'm here hopefully for the long term.
Great, what a nice story. Any questions?
No.
Have, have you been a liquor license holder?
I have not.
Okay, so this will be your first go around?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Um, I did review the documents, I didn't memorize everything, but I read through everything.
Not tested yet, that's another ten minutes.
Okay, sure.
Yeah, recognize, please recognize that, uh, the, um, the license itself is, it's a privilege, it's, uh, you know, you don't, not, I don't mean this personally.
Yep.
But, you don't own it, but you might as well, because you're gonna be that responsible for it and its administration. And it does require that you and you alone, uh, make certain that the establishment is upholding the local regulations, the state regulations, and the like, even if that means having to counter your superiors, okay?
I understand.
So, that's, I, I don't mean to lecture with, with this, um, there has been a bit of a history within the town in the past, so it's always useful to make it absolutely clear. And I know Pierre is very familiar with my references to the town, uh, overall. Pierre, very, very quick question, uh, what will be his role within the, within the organization?
He's the general manager of Atlantica.
Okay, so it's not just the liquor license, your overall management.
Yes, sir.
We wish you great success.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
You're quite welcome.
Thank you.
Been to your restaurant, it's great, uh, you can duplicate half of that here, we're gonna have a big success.
Thank you.
I echo what Steve said, over communicate with everybody, and you're gonna do fine.
Thank you.
And, uh, congratulations and best of luck.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, nice find, Pierre.
Uh, welcome and, um, best of luck. Um, the one thing after hours, if there's staff on, on premise afterwards, just let the police know they're there.
I read it, and, I read it in a little.
Um, if somebody used to cash out hours late at night, um, bad things happen after midnight.
I understand.
Um, and if there's no one that's known to be there, and they're there, um, it's a safer letting.
No, and I've been known to do, to get ahead of the inventory on a Sunday night, so you don't have to do it all in a big place like that. Um, so if I do, if I do implement that and we're counting bottles and doing administrative things, I will, I will definitely be.
Like, you know, typically it's inventory at the end of the month or something, where you, you've got several people there, and it's just a safety sake.
Yeah. Right. Well, I think you'll, my plan is just to be me and maybe an assistant general manager, and I do inventory weekly.
That's it.
All right, great, um, thank you, um, welcome aboard, everybody's anxious to help make it a success, and, um.
Thank you, yeah, I'm excited to be here.
When you're gonna open, do you have any idea? Just so you can tell the public.
I don't know, I'm allowed to give those. We'll be opening this month.
This month?
That's, that's what they keep saying, right, it's a long month.
All right. Got twenty days left.
Um, don't, don't leave quite yet, because we wanna, I wanna ask for a motion to, um, approve, um, Richard DeAngelis as the manager of Atlantica, the lic, uh, alcohol license holder, so.
Second.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Great, congratulations.
Thanks again.
Good luck to you all.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Pierre, you wanna walk us through the.
Abs- absolutely.
The, so, the other part of this public hearing notice is, um, is, um.
Expansion, expansion.
Yeah, expansion or alteration of premises, so you could walk us through what you're proposing.
Uh, for the record, Alex Mark Gordon, uh, I'm a partner at Cohasset Hospitality Partners. Um, everyone's aware of the, the current condition of the old Salt House beer, uh, minutes demise a few years ago. Um, we started, uh, management of the three properties in October, um, and we're very much looking forward to a vibrant, busy, um, restaurant at forty-four, forty-six Border Street. Um, one of the challenges we're facing, um, relative to the, the beer and its existing condition is an inability to, um, have patrons dine and drink on it. Um, as an option for this season, um, and I just wanna stress that this is a, a temporary, uh, extension of premises, this is not something that we're looking for on a permanent basis. Um, we would like to be allowed to use the parking area, um, for food and beverage service. Uh, the pier, um, will not be repaired unfortunately this summer. The documentums, uh, on the, I guess, northern east side have already been installed, that prevents any, um, major construction from taking place, uh, and as well as a permitting process with the, with the state of Massachusetts that will need to, uh, that will need to follow very carefully. Um, as you can see, we've drawn dimensions on the map, um, are there any questions specifically to that?
How, how many pla, how many spaces are you giving up by putting this thing here?
Uh, it's a total of four parking spaces, um, one, two, three, four, well, four and one handicap spot.
Plus the town's parking too, right?
No, the town's parking.
No, it's not, it, this is, no, this is.
It's not towns, no, this is not towns, not.
This is not town property, no.
That was my question, this all is private, par, your private property, okay.
Yes, it is, it is, attached to the Atlantica.
And where.
And there is a, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, no, just where would you put the handicap parking?
So, um, if you look, uh, I guess, on the, on the land side, there are a few spots, um, sort of left to our, to the left of our dumpster area.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I guess it would be.
Yep.
Yeah, um, and we can designate, um, whatever the state regulation is for, uh, handicap parking there. We, there is enough space, um, handicap parking spaces, I believe, do be, do need to be a little bit wider. Um, and that also allows level access to the dining area for the customers, handicap customers.
Paul?
Um, how close to the road is it with the, the edge?
Um. I'd say it's probably ten to fifteen feet. There is a pretty healthy buffer there.
Yeah, is there gonna be some sort of, uh, I don't know, either say trystic barrier, or is it just?
No, so, as, 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 yeah, as, as part of the, um, sort of sectioning off, if you will, of this area, um, we will be installing planters, is sort of the simplest way to describe them. Um, they will be filled with stones and dirt and living trees, um, and they'll weigh somewhere in the three to four hundred pound each range. They will not be mobile, so they'll be sort of set in place and filled, um, with the purpose of creating the patio and defining the alcohol beverage service area, but also to prevent, um.
Road debris.
Right, so they'll, they'll basically frame the patio area, one of the questions I have is, what about the, the owners of the, the boat dock, the documentums down below, how will they access?
So, I can talk a little Ted Lubitz, uh, one on three Border Street. So, per the documentum, the sort of right-of-way to access that is uninterrupted and actually doesn't go through this parking lot.
Okay.
So, this is exclusive use area to our condominium, so their access remains unchanged, which is actually that pathway in front of the front entrance.
Which would be between the porch and the, where you're marking off, okay.
And the, yeah, yeah, and it's still there and remains unchanged.
It does cross the service corridor essentially, but it's been that way since they were installed, so.
Yes. Forever, yep. Okay. Any questions?
This is, it's perceived to be temporary until the reconstruction.
Until the business fix, yes.
Okay. And the only, the only question I have is really answerable more by the town. Is there, is the right of way infringed upon from the roadway?
Um, I don't, I don't believe it is.
Okay.
I have walked it. I know that, you know, others have.
That's, that's my only question with respect to this. I mean, if they, if that property owner, if they have the deed to the property and, uh, you know, and they're gonna conform to the regulation. You know, they're, my only con-, other concern was the replacement of a, of a missing handicap parking spot, which they've already addressed.
Right, it's such a tricky little parking area anyway, so this is probably good use.
It is.
Um, and then the, the, the actual patio, is there some sort of, I mean, has there been, what's the progress on that?
So, that. Yeah, so, as you know, that did go through conservation commission, and, uh, they did receive approval to take down the entire patio and replace it with wood decking and piers. Um, we were later informed, actually as part of the harbor plan, uh, that, that requires some chapter ninety-one permitting. Uh, so as part of that, we reevaluated and given that it's a historic pier that sort of matches the other one on the other side of the, uh, the town dock, we really think it's important to restore the pier and bring it back to its original condition. So, we confirmed with Jeff Summers that we need to file a new, and I, and start that process again.
An eye, yes.
Uh, there was no way to do it in enough time to get the documentums in, so we sort of pushed that project to occur. So, hopefully permitting will start this spring into the summer, and then hopefully with the construction start date in the winter.
Okay.
That's it. You're, you're going back to granite block?
That's the plan, yeah. We actually have talked to some people about sort of what the repairs actually need to be and how it can be done so that we can leave some of the, the walls in place and sort of, and felt, and to, to reconstruct the pier.
Wow.
Well, I, I admire your effort because that's a, you're right, it's a, it's a historic structure, and it, it would be nice to have it match up. It's a big job.
Yeah, yeah, that's our intent, yeah.
So, I know enough about this property to be dangerous, but I do know it's two condos. Do you both have rights to this parking or how does that work?
No, it's an exclusive to us.
It's, it's condo one or condo two?
It's, um, yeah, it, we're unit one, I believe. So, I've got the condo plan here. We've reviewed it.
So, you don't have to get approval from the three Ps? You don't have to get into any of that?
Yeah.
You guys have it by right in the condo docks?
Yep, we have exclusive easement for the parking area.
Okay. And then Chris, did, did you have quickly look at this?
Um, I.
So, all the applications, Jen, are, were sent to the chief for his review? Um, I can also have them do a secondary review of it, but they didn't receive anything but.
Just, I mean, you know, I haven't, I don't want to, I just, I mean, I, my concern is town liability on the, the frontage on the road.
I'm, I'm guessing.
Okay.
I mean, what if somebody got drunk and crashed through it?
Right.
You know what I'm saying? So, I just.
I'm all for it. Don't hear me as saying I'm negative. I just think.
The chief wanted to check in.
Yeah, I, we had not heard, I had not heard anything back from him. We've talked about other things, uh, but we, we could just double check, but I, uh, there are, I gotta think, um, where else is outside seating? It's a little bit in front of the five south, and this, and the B has the largest, you know.
The only problem with this is that it's on curve and there's nothing to stop it. And then, uh, chief, does this affect fire access?
No, not at all. Uh, we won't have any problem with, uh, getting in where we need to. Um, they're not obstructing any of the fire department connections or our access to sprinklers or stand pipes or anything along that line, so I don't see it as a problem now.
Okay.
Okay, Steve?
What, um, Ted, if, if this were approved, what would be the, uh, the opening date?
So, same as, uh, weather permitting, obviously, but this May, so, um, yeah, this month.
This. All right. We, will we go with questions?
Yeah, I just wanna, um, Jen raised her hand. It is a public hearing, so I just want to say something.
Yep.
So, just, we'll send it off to the ABCC tomorrow, and then pending approval, that's when they would be able to open, and then I was just gonna say we'd also notify the others via certified mail.
Okay.
Alright.
Just one quick question. How long would you, do you think it would be in service there? Probably till October and then?
Probably sometime mid-July.
Yeah, Memorial Day to Labor Day.
Okay, and hoping that would, Patty will be done by the following year.
Correct.
Any, uh, comments to the hearing record from the audience?
I, I, I'm sorry, I have one more question. So, Ted, i- 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 is it, is it accurate to say that we could approve this on and, uh, for this year?
Yep. Good.
Yes.
And that if, if for any reason the pier were not completed, you would, you would then, your understanding would be that you'd be reapplying for this next year?
Yes, yes.
Okay. All right.
Okay, any comments? Okay. Hearing none. If there's a motion to approve the alteration of premises for, I don't know, let me just get you the address, forty-four, forty-six Border Street?
So, move with amendment.
With the amendment being that the, the alteration.
I, I, move, move, move that we approv-, approve, uh, the, um, the extension of premises forty-four to forty.
Six?
Border Street, um, contingent upon the written, um, um. Okay, police? Yeah, basically, the, but the, the, the written, uh, agreement of, uh, from the, uh, uh, the liquor agent, which would be the chief.
Okay, and it's for one year.
Yeah, that way at, at least the applications are going forward to ABCC is not, not withheld.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 One second.
Oh, sorry, second, there was, it was, uh.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
First, second, okay. All those in favor? Aye, thank you.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Alright, I'll sit. Can't wait.
Good luck. Twenty days, gentlemen.
Yeah, my birthday's coming up. You gotta be open by my birthday.
Twenty days. Twenty days. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Okay. Alright, thanks for your patience. We have another public hearing. The Cohasset Board of Selectmen, acting as the liquor licensing, license authority, will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, April ninth, two thousand nineteen, at seven ten PM in the selectman's office, Town Hall, forty-one Highland Ave. To consider the application of RBLV Inc., DVA Lenny's Hideaway for an alteration of the license premises at eight Stage Coachway, Cohasset Mass is clearly a continuation of that hearing. The license premises is presently occupying the sec-, entire second floor, which includes the main dining area, two restrooms, kitchen and bar. Exits are located on the front and back of the second floor. The main entrance exit is on the first floor. The applicant is requesting to alter, extend the license premises to include an outdoor seating area off of the dining area and on the second floor roof. The outdoor space is twenty by twenty-eight feet, for a total of five hundred and sixty square feet, and would have thirty additional seats for patrons. The area will be walled, roped off. The public is invited to offer public input on this proposal in writing in advance of the public hearing or in person at the hearing. Um, and if the, um, the Lenny, Lenny's Hideaway folks wanna come up, introduce yourself, um, just kinda reorient us and the audience to this project, and we'll go from there.
I'm Stephanie Burke, one of the owners of Lenny's Hideaway.
And I'm Derek Burke, the other owner of Lenny's Hideaway.
Welcome, thank you. So, I'll tee it up a little bit. You were here on, um, April ninth, and we had asked some questions just in terms of the layout. You provided us very comprehensive, um, kinda schematic drawings, which we appreciate, um, and some information, general information about, um, about music, which was one of our other questions. Um, if you just wanna kinda summarize where you're at in the plan, uh, for the public as much as us?
Um, well, we, we heard your concerns and we wanted to address them head on, and the first thing we did is obviously we provided with the more detailed schematics. Um, and we just would like you to notice that we, for our balcony, we put a wall balcony in there, which would hopefully contain all the sound within there and not allow any sound to project downward or straight across, which is probably the major concern because of the neighbors there. Um, we thought that was a, a, a big, uh, addition to the plan.
What's the approximate height of that?
It'll be about four feet or so.
It's, uh, forty.
So, like a s-, seated table, would, it would still be kind of up?
Yeah, it'd probably be up about, uh.
It's, forty-two, it's, uh, at Garbrail height, so, Garbrail height, and.
Okay.
Yeah, Garbrail height. Um, and we also wanted to address the sound from the, uh, the speakers, the amplified sound issue. Um, and we feel that one of the ways that we're really, um, able to address that and mitigate any sound complaints is that we have a lot of little speakers around, so their envelope of sound is pretty small. So, if you have a lot of little speakers, you don't have to turn anything up too loud because there's always a speaker right next to you.
Mm.
Um, and we feel like in terms of ampli-, amplification, there won't be much because it's all right here next to you.
We actually have the ability to, with the speakers, to turn it down in a certain part of the room and have it at a different volume in another part of the room, which we do often because, um, a room, there's a, one of our dining areas is more geared towards children and, um, older people because there's food, it's lower seating, and often, you know, we turn that room lower.
Right.
To accommodate.
And, and really, I mean, you're, the, the, it's more ambient music outside. You're looking for just atmospheric music as opposed to entertainment outside on the patio? Is it a better?
Uh, correct, and perhaps we weren't even considering any, any music outside.
Okay.
Depending on what you guys allow, but, uh, we, we're very cautious about the, the sound. We, we wanna respect our neighbors certainly.
Okay. Okay, good.
Um, and as far as live entertainment goes, it's, we'd rather use the space for the dining of the customers. It's, it's, it's a dining, or it's not a, it's not a hangout, right, you know, right? So, yeah.
Okay.
Questions?
So, great, so the area here, they're gonna, the, there's a deck which is over, uh, halfway through from the main to the parking area.
Mm-hmm.
And the roof deck is the other area, which I guess is, uh, from what I've seen is a large air conditioning conduit there.
Yes.
That's gonna be removed, and that'll be extended there. Is, is there enough room on the deck that goes over the pathway between the two buildings from a, a distance to serve and to access?
Yes, is enough room, um, so it's, with that, it's enough room to have handicap accessibility and to have dining options there. Um, again, we understood that there was concerns of egress and flow, so the plan is to not put tables there, it's more to put, um, like a counter that you'd say.
Okay.
Everything against, so it's not gonna be large groups sitting around and gathering around.
And the, there's a, like a standing wall halfway, that's gonna be removed and push right up through the access where the elevator is and the stairs, correct?
Oh, um, we don't know about that. I think that's the standing wall we have. It's on the inside when, when we come up the elevator.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
Take a look around. There's like a half standing wall.
To have it be removed?
Yeah.
Oh, um.
We could certainly remove that if that's what you'd like, uh.
Oh, I, I'm just curious. It says existing half wall there, and I just went from a space availability.
Oh.
I'm just looking at it from a, a visible angle, so that could be.
Yes, exist-, yeah, the existing half wall. It's, I don't believe it, it was the demo, it's still on there after the demo floor plans, um, um. Was, I mean, we didn't have plans to remove it, I think, at any point on.
It is, at this point, it's accessible for, for handicaps. It seems to work.
Mm-hmm.
Alright, Jack, Steve, any questions?
No, this is responsive to all the questions that I'd had of previous, um, I'll have to hit the, uh, earlier session of this hearing, so. And where's the air conditioning vent go now?
Uh, there's a cluster of air conditioning vents, uh, on the north side of the adjacent roof, and, uh, that's where we're gonna move it. It's easy for us to move the gas lines right there, so it seems to make a lot of sense logically.
And access and egress is through the French door? There's no outside staircase? It's just gonna be into the building?
There is an outside staircase, but it's not one that we would use as one of our designated exits. But there is a, an existing fire exit on the roof, but these are the ones we'll be using. Those are the ones that will be.
Okay.
Those are the public access and egress.
For visitors.
Those will be for visitors purposes.
Okay.
Visit. Alright, can I, thank you. Chief, you've viewed the space?
We've reviewed the entire space from a fire prevention standpoint, and I think they've met everything that we need them to meet. Uh, I will mention, as Derek has just said, that there is an additional fire escape off of that flat roof that was put in place back in the day when the greenhouse was created, way back in the seventies slash eighties.
Okay.
As I shared with, with the Burks, uh, I know the guy that put it out there, so, uh, I know exactly what it was there for.
Don't date yourself.
Everybody's, everybody's revealing tonight.
Talking about my father.
I was only ten years old back then.
I was watching the Flintstones.
Assistant Fire Chief at ten.
It's a little hat, the vacuum cleaner hose.
Yeah, yeah. Fake fire truck.
Alright, any other questions from the board?
Nope.
Okay. Okay.
Yep.
Um, any comments from the public? Okay, um, hearing none. Um, wanna make a motion? Here's the, here's the hearing notice.
Yes. Uh, move that the licensing authority, uh, approve the application of RBLV Incorporated, doing business as Lenny's Hideaway for an alteration of the license premises at eight, eight Stage Coachway, Cohasset, uh, Massachusetts. Uh, current premises, uh, occupies the entire second floor, which includes the main dining area, two restrooms, kitchen and bar. Exits are located front and back of the second floor. The main entrance exit is on the first floor. The applicant, uh, is requesting, and this motion seeks to approve, um, the alteration to extend the license pren-, premises.
That's good.
To include the outdoor seating area off of the dining room on the second floor.
That's great.
This is last meeting.
Extra special job.
Second.
It should be absolutely.
Alright, do we have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Thank you. We're very excited.
Congratulations, good luck.
Okay.
Congratulations.
This is, this is something we just need to re-sign from Mr. Doolis. Um.
Right on time.
How about that? Um, alright, just give me one minute to breathe for a second. Um.
I'm not dying.
Okay, alright, we're moving right along. Um. The next, next up, this is, uh, sorry, this is Mr. Doolis. This is something we approved last week, but the name on the license was just incorrect.
Got it.
It had a main name. Um, so, um, I think it was at one of our last meetings, I can't remember exactly what day, but we talked about reforming the Alternative Energy Committee. Um, we had a, um, um, kind of a summary of what they've been doing in the past and made some edits, um, based on input from the board, um, and have a new charge for a, what we're calling Cohasset Energy Sources Committee. We can't call it the same name that's, that was approved at town meeting. Um, we recommended that we create another name, so that'll be the name just for the time being. We can work that out later. Um, um, and the charge is here for the board to look at. Um, the composition of the committee would, um, consist of seven members of the public with demonstrated interest and relevant skills. Terms will be three years. Initial terms, uh, members shall be appointed by the board of selectmen initially with staggered terms. Three members for three years, three members for two years, and one member for one year, and then everybody will kick into a three-year term after that. The town manager, or one who's designated to serve ex officio. Um, one of the selectmen recommended, um, a, a change that I didn't include in this, um, which was to seek term limits, and it's something that we really need to think about holistically for the town as opposed to any one particular committee. Um, advisory is the only one with, with term limits, and that's by statute. So, um, I would recommend not entertaining that at this point, um, but to, um, hopefully, um, approve this charge for the Cohasset Energy Sources Committee. Um, I'll let you come up if you want in a second. The other thing is, we have a number of applications from people that are currently on Alternative Energy Committee as well as some other, um, residents in town, and I think we need to wait till we get all the applications in before we make appointments, which we can probably do at our next meeting, um, or one of our next two meetings. Um, so, any comments from my colleagues on the charge? So, basically, this is what we were given at the last meeting. I.
What? I, I, I recognize, I, I, I was upset. That's why I was.
Smush it down, yeah, and then pulled out some, um, um, just some, you know, charges, so, yeah, you can make your comments now if you want. Um, I'm gonna give everybody a second to read it. You wanna come up?
So, would you please just, it's gonna be called Cohasset Energy.
So would you please just, it's gonna be called Cohasset Energy Sources Committee?
Yeah, the only reason I used sources was because that was actually in the original town meeting action, but we can, we can talk about it. If anybody has a sexier name or something that'll be an acronym, throw it at me.
What was the, what was the reasoning behind not being able to keep the original name?
Because you can't technically have two separately raised committees with the same name operating.
Ah.
So right now we have, under the Troyka, we have an Alternative Energy Committee, which technically sunsetted, but it didn't.
Years ago. That was actually called, it was actually called the Alternative Energy Sources Committee.
Right, right.
Okay. The, uh, so you can actually, I guess, in theory, you can, you can keep calling it, it's just become, you, you keep calling it the AEC
AEC.
because the technical town meeting name was the Alternative Energy Sources Committee. We just, we just dropped the.
Am I sure this is, this is not descriptive of what they're doing, right, I mean, I, I never.
Wanna do that? Well, this is just a chart, I mean, I based it on, and we can, no, no, no.
It's not criticism, I'm just, I'm talking about making it easier for the citizens to understand what they do, you know?
Yeah. Right, except, we didn't wanna get too detailed because we wanted them, basically what it says is investigate and identify alternative energy resources and opportunities for municipal energy efficiency and resilience. Support the town manager and staff in exploring grants and procurement options that maximize safety, energy efficiency, and reduce emissions. Investigate community-wide residential and business energy efficient clean energy options. Contribute to public awareness and education on town initiatives and long-term benefits of achieving Cohasset's strategic energy efficiency objectives. Together with the town manager, report to the BOS quarterly on the town's progress and the cost-saving benefits of meeting the objectives of the green community status and other energy-based policies that benefit the town and its citizens, support other committees as requested by the Board of Selectmen. Um, and that's a typo, that next little line that goes nowhere. So, I, I'm, you know, if you wanna spend more time teasing it, um, this was pretty much what they gave us and then whittled down based on some comments, um, from board members over the last week.
I don't really hear what they have to say about it, sir.
Yep, yep, so, um, yeah, you wanna come on up? Steve, Mary Jove, Steve, Steve.
So, so we could potentially call it Cohasset Altering Energy Charge?
Yeah, we could do that.
No, it's not very helpful. Yeah, so, so in general, um, it's possible, I, I can tell you that from our own committee meeting, we would prefer just AEC, Alternative Energy Committee, if that's possible legally or by governing standards, because it's a familiar term.
Okay. Yep.
So, so thank you for that consideration, would everyone agree?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, so thank you for that, and, and, um, I haven't seen the charges written, but it all sounded really quite familiar. I, I, um, and I also thank you for, um, the, um, consideration of some of the committee members who, um, have not completed their applications, so that, so that when you choose the committee members, you have the full slate of everyone who's interested, so.
Because, because I know you have some current members that are interested in continuing on that you don't have applications from, so.
Yes.
Yeah, we'll look at them all in one whole group.
Yeah, thanks very much for that. Uh, so, so, if you don't mind, I, I do have another question, and that is, um, when we submitted the, um, the original draft, this was only a draft, it included some other, it included some options for activities, and it included a request that really had to do with raising public awareness and really keeping energy on the, kind of the public's mind, the profile, the monitoring, the, the whole, um, kind of dashboard approach to this, so that, so that, um, it's a support for us, it's a way for us to communicate with the town. And so, I'm wondering if it would be possible for you to give us some feedback in terms of what was your reaction to that request? Because it was basically, if we could approach you regularly, like quarterly, then I promise you we wouldn't take more than fifteen minutes and just give you, uh, you know, an update and also receive your guidance, so that grants that we hear about or, or projects that are emerging or green community grants, so that we're all on the same page, it is.
So, yeah, not to interrupt you, but, you know, I'm happy to kind of take this and do another round with it. However, the only thing that I really removed in the edits after getting some feedback from, um, the selectmen were like very specific initiatives, because in the committee charge, that really should be something you all decide with us in terms of, you know, mo- like one of the, I can't remember the exact wording, but one of them was like moderating the electric car fleet or.
Exactly.
And, and I think all of those specific initiatives are implied in these general areas. I did leave in, um, the contribute to public awareness and education on town initiatives and long-term benefits of achieving Cohasset's strategic energy efficiency objectives, which I think begs the question of.
What are?
What are our objectives in energy efficiency? And that would require that, a, a back and forth communication amongst us. And also, I don't wanna tell you what public awareness is, I think that again, is a, is a conversation we have annually, um, with, with you as we set annual objectives for the town. I also did leave in, um, what was the other thing you mentioned, the, the, oh, that we would report quarterly. We would have you report to us quarterly, so if there's more to, I didn't wanna get too detailed on very specific initiatives because this could live ten years from now and everything will have shifted. But I think that bo- both the Board of Selectmen and their policies and objectives for the community, working with the recommendations of Committees in the Weeds, whatever committee it is, together should decide what those kind of, you know, what projects you specifically tee up each year.
That makes sense, that makes perfect sense.
So, if that makes sense to everybody, if you want us to take another kind of tailoring crack at it, I'm happy to do that.
Yeah. Thanks, I, we're delighted.
Okay.
We were really pleased, we appreciate the direct connection and your ownership of, you know, our initiatives and your oversight and your guidance. That'll be a big help for us.
And, and, you know, one of the things, obviously, then congratulations on, um, the aggregation vote, which, I mean, that is something that is now a project that the town is going to be doing. We, we have town meeting authority to come up with that, so that theoretically, that might take every ounce of alternative energies efforts, um, over the next year. I don't know, that probably will, and, um, but, but that's the kind of conversation that we'll all have together, and I think this kind of frames that enough that you can help with that and do other things as well.
Right, right.
Chris?
So, I, I, I've just joined the State Green Energy Community Task Force. I was asked to join for this, for the region, uh, another meeting, this was.
Get like a bus?
No, no, I got to drive to Worcester, uh, so, um, but there were electric charging stations, uh, at the DPD headquarters, which was very nice. So one of the things we talked about, um, was, uh, was, we actually do have a goal, by the way, we have a goal to, to, to reach a twenty percent of energy reduction over five years, um, which it turns out has been problematic all around the state. Uh, partly because a lot of the, and one of the, one of the things that's really helpful to have a citizens group is, and most of the committees that have been successful have a group of active citizens that are plugged in and helping and, and working, uh, because part of it becomes less sexy. Once you get the big, you know, the big stuff, some of it becomes less sexy, like the solar, solar arrays up, very big and visible.
Mm-hmm.
Replacing, you know, with variable drives, the HVAC system in the, in the hospital school is not sexy and it's not a big photogenic opportunity, but it's just as important.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and we're also, part of the conversation also, how do you pivot to expanding, uh, you know, public knowledge about things that can be done, whether, you know, publicly but also at home, what, what are things you can do to help reduce your energy footprint and all that? So I, I think there's a lot of opportunity to, there's gonna be a lot more opportunity with the state to partner, and we have opportunities to get, get funding. And I think, uh, having a group that's committed to working with staff on this is incredibly helpful, because this is an area that demands a lot of time. We only have so much staff time to devote this, um, that said, it's been very successful, the partnership to this point, getting into Green Communities Program, the solar array, the, the progress we've made has been really successful, we actually just, I just signed off on another grant. Last week they'll install three more electric charging stations in town, um, in front of me, get the funding. Um, the village parking lot, the rec center, and, and the high school.
That's crazy.
Fantastic.
So, um, no, we stopped to get the funding.
We need more electric cars.
There's more than you realize, I mean, we got a Tesla plugs in here, not Poles, we get another one that plugs in here sometimes.
Another one?
Uh, but yeah, Peter Fannin wants one to come here anyway, the football coach, he could plug it at the high school with his car.
That's great.
So, uh.
Can we just put a meter on it and charge it?
Yes.
Eventually, eventually.
It's hard to reduce your footprint if you keep giving it away.
How about cameras?
Uh, yeah, so the good news, they don't take that much energy, but yes, so one of the, one of the challenges has been data, and, 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 and part of.
I'll, I'll remember that, it doesn't take that much energy, I'll, I'll, I'll point that out.
Yes. Well, you have to make it.
I can't wait for him to stand up and tell me.
But I, one of the things that was very helpful, um, uh, um, why am I blanking on her name? Uh, the woman who did all the work on Mass Energy, um.
Tom?
Pat?
Pat, yes, Pat.
Pat, Pat Gooding?
Um, Pat Gooding, um, that, that's how, they're, they're changing the contractor that provides that service, which is a good thing apparently, so. Having, you know, continued partnership on that is very helpful, some of this technical stuff is, and, and going through some of the data, because it turns out some of the data we're dealing with is not really, not just for us, but others, not entirely accurate, which is one of the problems with generating stuff, so I think there's a, a great opportunity for partnership in the immediate short term and, and over the next few years for that question.
And you'll be happy to know that Pat has re-applied.
Good.
Yes, yeah, that's great, she's our analyst, yeah.
And, and we actually have folks that have been trained, I mean, Michelle O'Leary has gone to super programs, Brian has, Jason has, so we have a team of staff that are much more up to speed on some of this.
And, and one of the things that we discussed a couple of months ago, making this a selectmen's committee as opposed to kind of working very fuzzily under some, uh, you know, a, a, a charge through town meeting that came, um, for a specific purpose for a year, we can change this anytime, so if we feel like there is another area or another, um, something that needs to be kind of memorialized in, in the charge, um, we'll do that. But again, I wanted to just give it a framework so that you can do whatever we all collectively decide is, are, are the right steps forward for the town, so. Thank you very much, all right.
Five, you wanna put a date, five twenty-eight, or?
For.
Then to come back with a, pick up the conversation?
Yeah, so to do appointments, yeah.
And to, and to file us the charge?
Um, yeah, it's up to the board whether they wanna vote on the charge tonight, or, or.
Maybe we can always adapt.
Yeah, just as soon, get the charge done, um, if possible, um, Steve?
Uh, uh, I like the way you, um, wrote this, uh, just one little stupid editorial comment, the last line in the charge, you had the name of the committee, I don't know why that's there.
Yeah. Yeah. The, the, yes, I made that correction.
Okay.
I, yeah, I did this over dinner, sorry. I've only had it three weeks. Sorry, Steve, uh, what's your name?
So, just wanted to, um, what's that, that's my.
So, what's your name?
Not Steve.
I called you Steve.
I, I think the point of this was, we tried to, all the information that came from, you know, your committee, or I guess the HVAC committee, um, the prior committee, and try to make it so that it's broad enough to give flexibility, but not so precise that you end up looking towards an individual project, um, because things are gonna change, I mean, whether it's, you know, solid-state batteries or, you know, thermal, uh, geothermal for, you know, town heating and things like that, so that we tried to make it a little bit broader so that there's options there. Um, and when I came in, uh, mentioned to Chris that, you know, all the electric cars are charging, that means to me, they're being used. And being used, that's exceedingly inefficient, um, at eighty percent to ninety percent efficiency versus, I know, Steve, you may not think it costs a lot, um, but they don't cost a lot, uh, but I think this is adequate the way it is, and I would say we can always modify it.
I'm moving in with you, because I don't cost a lot.
No, you don't.
You can add it.
Okay, um, is there a motion to approve the, the charge, uh, for the Alternative Energy Committee?
Some move, second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great, it's done, I will make the corrections, I will copy the, at least two of you, and send it to Tracy to put on the website, and we'll see you again with, uh, some appointments.
Great.
Very, very nice.
Yeah. That's exactly right, okay, um, so next up is, um, just something that we do every year, it's kind of a, a housekeeping. We need to, um, take a vote to set up an alternative location for the election. Um, the alternative site is Wilka Commons, I don't know under what circumstances we would ever employ the alternative site.
Um, if, if this building was forever, for any reason, not available due to, like, what's right, yeah, for the furniture, anyways.
Hill, you know, but.
Yeah, it's, it's, if we need to designate an alternative location, Wilka Commons, uh, it has been decided at this minute, so if, you, you need to vote to designate it
Yeah.
Sure.
For all elections, actually, I think Carol would like to do it for, uh, twenty eighteen, nineteen, and twenty twenty, because we're gonna be going to the presidential cycle in the spring, there'll be primaries and.
So I have a, a motion.
Does she have, oh, you have a motion?
Yeah, it's already written up, I'll, or I'll read it and I'll ask for somebody to make, to just say, so move.
Move it?
Yeah, to move it, thanks.
Mm.
Motion to designate the Cohasset Senior Center, Wilka Commons at ninety-one Sawyer Street as the alternative voting location for all elections through twenty twenty.
So, move, second.
All those in favor?
All right.
Aye.
Can you walk to vote?
Yeah, that'd be good, you can still walk to vote, no matter where it is.
Yeah.
Um, okay. Okay, next up is a discussion that's been a lo- a long time in the, in the making, um, which is a discussion, um, of the renovation of the basketball courts, um, over on Sawyer Street, um, and we have somebody from the REC Commission here, and also, um, as part of that renovation, um, a, a request for two placements of memorials, um, over there, um, so, Mr. Bernika, can you come up?
Yes.
And are you injured?
No, it's, uh, stiff, old.
Just gingerly? Um.
Closing in on fifty.
Yeah, you do, I was gonna say you have a birthday this month too, don't you?
I do indeed, I do indeed, yes.
Anyway, if you could introduce yourself for the record, and we'll.
So, um, so, yeah, I'm, I am Tim Bernika.
We'll speak really loudly for you.
I need that, I am Tim Bernika, I'm a member of the REC Commission, I was, you were gratefully, or you grace, graciously appointed me last August for election on Saturday, so looking forward to that, um, my first election. Um, so anyways, as Diane said, what we are doing, uh, there, there are a number of projects going on at REC, and, um, one that I'm assigned to is the hundred Sawyer Street project, is the shorthand we have for it. Um, the plan is, the basketball court that is, uh, currently there, we are going to replace that court with two new courts. Uh, the two new courts, if you, if the court now goes roughly, call it northwest-ish to southeast-ish, we're gonna go the other direction. We're gonna actually head towards the, the railroad track, is our plan. Uh, part of the reason there is, uh, to maximize the use of poles for the, the lighting, uh, not having to, uh, put in a lot of additional poles and a lot of additional cost to, to get it lit, and, uh, the fact that there's some sewer, um, issues on the other side of where the current court is at, 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 at present. Uh, so it would be harder to kind of fit a court in the exact spot that we wanted to do it. Um, so we have, uh, gone through the process, the DPW, we've worked with the DPW folks, they have gotten some, um, some bids for us for, uh, for the construction or demolition and construction of the court, the, um, preparation of the surface, the lighting, and the, uh, uh, goals, the, the back, uh, backboards and, and, uh, uh, barns, the whole backboard place. Um, and as part of this reason, one of the things that we, we would like, and one of the things that we're, we're requesting is that we, um, are, be allowed to put in two, um, small memorials for two individuals that both, um, one was very involved in basketball, uh, specifically, um, and tragically lost his life about four years ago, um, and another was a longtime resident, um, born and raised, adjacent to the library, and, uh, was a, uh, you know, used all the fields, um, uh, worked for and participated in the REC programs, um, and he was a, a general, um, tremendous athlete around town.
She was a Special Olympian.
And, and, and a exceedingly decorated Special Olympian.
Correct.
Um, who lived just, just outside, uh, just, adjacent to the library.
Jesse McDonald.
Jesse McDonald.
Hmm.
Um, so, uh, the, the, the plan there is, there, there are two separate memorials. One is, um, the, the, when Stefan Hanka is, is the gentleman's name that, that, um, was very involved with the basketball boosters. Um, when Stefan, um, passed away, his, uh, colleagues, his friend, his work colleagues, his friends, his, his colleagues on the basketball boosters board got together and gave some money, um, with the grand idea that at some point down the line, there would be this, this project that had been kicked around, hey, wouldn't it be great if the court on which we did all of our, our scrimmaging and all of our, our planning and practicing, wouldn't that be great if, if there was some way we could memorialize him in that spot? Um, the, uh, basketball boosters have, has purchased a, uh, small four-foot, um, roughly four-foot-long, uh, granite bench um, that we, uh, would like to, and, and, and we, we did this actually back in November, the, the family, the Hanka family, um, left town uh, for a short period to go back to their native land of Australia. We wanted to do something special for them to, to show respect and, and, um, to, to, uh, actually show that we, we were following through on our memorial plans uh, for Stefan, uh, before they left in November. Uh, we then dismantled the, the bench, uh, had it stored away, and are now awaiting approval here to hopefully get it back out there in time for this basketball season, which begins in a month. Um, and of course, when the, in, in August, when the, uh, construction, uh, begins on the two new courts, the bench will have to be re-sited and, and put in an appropriate location. the bench will have to be recited and, and put in an appropriate location, um, but, but for the time being, that, that's sort of where we're at, and, uh, having, having had discussions with Diane, I know that, that, um, memorials are not, not really a, um, a, uh, maybe a, I don't know what the best way to put it is, it's, it's not a, it's, yeah, they're not easy to, to, um, to come by,
They're not easy.
And so that's one of the reasons why we wanted to come here and, and kind of present it as part of this overall redesign, um, and hopefully be able to, to slide these, um, two memorials in seamlessly with what we're trying to do at hundreds order.
Can, can you, before I open it up to questions specifically to the project, just queue up the actual project, I believe it's already been appro- this is something that's been in the plans, it's been appropriated through town meeting?
Correct, it's been appropriated, so, yeah, so, so the, the, um, the, uh, financing is coming from the, back in, uh, the special town meeting in December, REC was reallocated thirty-eight thousand dollars from a, a previous allocation from CPC, um, so that money is, is, is in the, in the kitty, um, the Cohasset Recreation Department has, um, roughly twenty-five thousand dollars of money that, uh, we, we got from running the summer basketball program the last three years, um, so that was sort of, uh, kept in a separate kitty at, at Recreation.
That's the revolving fund?
Yeah.
Is that REC revolving fund?
The REC revolving fund, um, and then, and then there was, there's the additional money from the Basketball Boosters that, that, uh, the, uh, friends and colleagues of Stefan have given. Um, so that, that money there will take out the, um, the construction of the two courts, the installation of the lights, the basketball, uh, the ba- basket installation, and then the court preparation.
And if, if, if I might.
You gotta come up, sorry.
No, I, just for.
You have to come up, yep, sorry, those are the rules, and there are the rules, and, and just introduce yourself, please.
Gotta come up. Just for.
Um, Mike Heschel is with Cohasset Basketball Boosters, hello everybody, uh, that, just wanted to say we're, Cohasset Basketball Boosters is in support of this project, and is wants to, would like to contribute nine thousand dollars to its completion, that's part, whether that happens tonight or, or otherwise, wanted to put that out there in terms of the financing of the project, is something we worked hard to, to do, and would like to score.
Great, thanks.
Thank you.
Um, so, questions from the board about the project, um, the basketball project, the memorials?
Yeah, so, right now, there, there's a, uh, this is kind of the schematic, so the train tracks here, the fence, sewer down here, and this is the basketball court with the two lights, and over here is the park.
Yeah, so I have.
Uh, are you planning on doing like this?
Yeah, so, so, I don't know if I have enough for everybody, unfortunately.
You can have one, we can just pass it along.
Yeah, you want to take that.
So one end will be by, well, actually, of the two courts, each end will be on, avoiding the train, correct?
Correct, yeah, this is, this is not the, unfortunately, this is not the best, uh, schematic, but you may, you might be able to see a little bit better here.
The sewer runs along the fence line.
I've drawn in the, the fence line there, so that, that might help a little bit on this black and white, that line, so, so a- at the, at the top there, you'll see, uh, the lined spaces, uh, at the ba- uh, the parking lot of the, um, yeah, so.
Right here, yep.
And so now at the bottom there, you'll see that, that straight line that goes, straight line goes along the playground fence, and then, um, straight out along the train tracks.
Yep.
So I have, I have a question for Chris, did this go to capital budget? Um, we, we started talking about this a couple of years ago, I, I believe it was, it was discussed, this conversation was back two or three years, I believe it did, it has not gone back, because we haven't, uh, it, it did in December when we reallocated the money, we talked, we discussed that, but it hasn't gone back for any.
Right.
But none of these funds were appropriated to town meeting, right?
Yeah, they were, uh, the, the CPC money was, just the CPC money, so, so, and it was, and it was discussed, because it originally went to capital, we were originally looking to pull money from the capital stabilization,
They are.
How much of it was appropriated?
The thirty-eight thousand.
but it ended up pivoting, so the conversation was vetted, but again, it was three years ago.
So, so, I'm, I'm not against this at all, it's a, I'm having a process conversation with everybody, and
Sure.
one of the big things that Steve and I have always pushed is follow on the process when it comes to big projects, because having, the selectmen are not equipped to do deep dives on this kind of stuff, we just don't have the time or the bandwidth, and the way the process usually works is you, these kind of projects go in front of capital budget, or maybe advisory if it's appropriate, and they get to do the deep dive.
Just, I just want to add, just quickly, kind of queue up the reason for, for this, my understanding is that the project has gone through the, the appropriate channels, but putting that aside, really what we're talking about today is whether we can accept the memorials, which is in our, our.
Yeah, the memorials don't have anything with the project, that's separate and apart, and that's something that's totally in your.
Yeah.
But they want some guidance as to whether they can go forward with the two memorials.
Well, it's. So, but I have an issue around projects that fly past the process. Yeah, so this, and I'm, I'm fully supportive of this, you know, I was on capital budget for fifteen years, I know what that place looks like.
Yeah, I.
So, we, we had conversations when this came up three years ago.
Right.
We, we're doing more in-depth dives today than we did three years ago.
Yep.
Um, so I think it's fair to say that if this project went in front of the process this year, it would have gotten a deeper dive than it did three years ago, and so I know it was discussed, I'd, I'd probably not, I'm confident that it did not go through quite as deep a dive three years ago as it would have today.
Well, my, my point is, uh, that i- i- in any point, did it show up as a recommendation to town meeting?
Yes.
On the bu- on the, on the capital projects list?
Uh, no, it would, it showed up as a CPC funded project.
Okay.
But they do review capital projects.
So, so. Well, no, at the time they didn't, if it was this year, they did, if it was last, they didn't.
But, but it did go in, it did, it did get vetted, uh, as part, and then the funding got altered, but that was, again, that was through.
Well, the, here's, my interest in it is that the funding is, uh, multivariate.
Yes.
Right, we've got, we've got funding that comes from CPC, appropriated, we have funding that comes from the revolving accounts, and then there's separate and private funding from the boosters that we've just heard about, and is that the same as the individual donations that you were describing?
That is, yeah, that's the, 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 uh, aggregated amount.
Correct. Right, okay, which is, all, all, all of which is very nice, but I look at this and say, well, it's a town project, please don't be offended by this, we couldn't provide the additional, whatever it was, fifteen, twenty thousand dollars for this, I mean, we, we devote enough time and energy to open space, I would think that it would be something that could be budgeted in. Having said that, I understand that the project, that they seek to move the project forward now, got it, um, I am four square in favor of expanding our recreational space around town, I can't wait till the discussion of tennis courts comes up.
Yeah, I, I told you.
But, um, but for that, I come back to the same question, because what is our policy with respect to memorials? And that is, that's a bigger thing, because in the past several years, we've had a lot of freelancing, I mean, ultimately, we, we are the arbiters of how town property is used, including, including for memorials, we've had, we've had rooms at the, the schools named without our knowledge, um, we've had, uh, we've, we've had, we've been gifted a memorial, you know, which was effectively thrust upon us, and ultimately, there's no, um, there's no vetting structure for it.
Right.
And so that's really my question, what is, what is the vetting structure for?
Isn't this the vetting structure for? Yeah, well. We're having an eternal conversation here, that's it, it's not your, it's not your project.
That, that, that has spurred the conversation of a creating.
This is where it starts.
Um, which we're not, I, I, we're not in a position to have a, to, to talk about it tonight, but don't have a, 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 something to chew on quite as much. Um, my recommendation is, is to come back to you with a policy that's very tailored to, these are the things that town wants, if you want to fund them, that's great, as opposed to allowing people just to bring anything they want, I think, and that's what most communities have gone to, because it's easier, uh, if you want to have money go into a REC fund, or, you know, you want to build benches around, or plant trees, or, with town, that designates, these are the kind, this is, this is what we want to put mo- money, if you want to give money, this is what we want to fund, uh, and we're happy to, you know, how, how to mark that might be, and again, I don't want to digress too much.
But it's actually a fund for memorials.
Yes, I, I, I think, and again, if somebody wants to fully fund a tree, yeah.
You can, you can tag your. You can tag your donation towards.
Yeah, I, I just think that'd be an easier way to manage, and otherwise you have to vet everything that comes in, and I, I remember back in my practice, there was somebody who wanted to memorialize this boulder, she had her friend and, uh, died of cancer, used to stop there on their run, and I'm like, like, you can't put a plaque on the boulder, she actually wanted to move it somewhere else, I said, you can't, you can't, you can't move the boulder. Um, I mean, I, I, you know, the board made the decision, not me at the end of the day, but, so, the, the, the challenge is, is, you know, you want to have people have an outlet, because there's people that want to do things, and, and, and nice, and, and the town, and you love to take people's, you know, money in the, in the, in the spirit, and recognize people who do wonderful things, you just want to do it in a way that's appropriate and, and helpful too.
You know, and we had, in, a couple of weeks ago, we touched upon this as a future agenda item, and there was, there were some sam- at, at least one sample in our packet too.
So we're, yeah, the, Boston has the most comprehensive one, and Boston is like, you know, here, we'll take your money, you can pick a tree or a bench.
So. Right, so, um, you know, I think, um, I, I guess right now, the question is, I mean, we're not gonna decide a policy tonight on memorials, and, and.
Yeah.
You can, you can put a plaque on it.
No, it was, it truly was an open-ended question.
Absolutely, and we, we, you know, we've danced around this for, you know, as long as I've been on the board, one of the first things, I had somebody who lives on a certain street, and she has town land across from her, and she mows it and plants special trees, and I was very uncomfortable about that, because, you know, she was putting park benches, and it was town land, and she said that's, you know.
Adverse possession.
Right, right, exactly, so, um, so we have, and it is, it is a tricky, and I'm.
So my, my concern is, is there's other people that have been said no to, and they've made significant pushes to do benches in other parts of the town, and, you know, we're just gonna have ish political issues around.
Right, until we set a, a policy.
A policy.
I mean, you know, sometimes have memorial committees, and they actually will make recommendations to board of selectmen, or the mayor, to the, right department.
Yes.
I think another committee would be.
Yep.
Brooklyn is.
But, I mean, but I mean, that's one way to, that's one way to vet it, so you can have, it goes to, you know, a three-member committee, and they say, these are the recommendations and requests, and
Right.
these we think are appropriate, or these should be, you know, put a plaque versus a, you know, a tower or something, I mean, there's certain regulations that, you know, would, would allow a vetting process.
Right, and, and one of the.
To see what other towns, you know, have considered when this has come up.
Yeah, sometimes the towns have given choices, you know, like, we have identified that we want to plant a hundred elm trees
Right.
that our alternative energy committee wants to, you know, um, reforest an area, and that, that would be how to go about doing it, so, so there's all kinds of options, and I, 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 we have to talk about them.
Brooklyn does public, Brooklyn does public guard too, I mean, that's a little bit more elaborate, they have a committee that's.
Oh, I'm all for that.
Yeah.
So, and, and I don't, look, I, I want to say, you know, these guys did the right thing, and they came to us with full disclosure, they shouldn't get, you know, it's like the kid who smokes pot and goes to his mother and tells his mother, right, I mean.
The truth, there's an analogy.
It's really good.
Wow.
You know, they shouldn't be punished for being straightforward, we should encourage people for being straightforward, right, so, you know, given that, we, he get, they get props and points and, and we just.
No, and I. Right, and then.
Well, yeah, I, I'm, I'm all to say, you know, let them do it, and they're gonna have to readdress it once they change the format of the, of the current field, of the current, uh, court that's there anyway. Um, I think it probably ought to be just careful as far as it's, it's granite.
Right, absolutely, yeah, and, and.
So.
But they're already made, right?
This is a, yeah, so.
You know, far, far enough away that, I hate to say it, you know, if you're doing the, you know, slime dunking, you have a whole, anniversary, you're gonna.
They're already done.
I don't think you can get any perspective, like, so this is.
See, the bike rack, where that bike rack is, that's, that's kind of where the, where the bench would be.
Yeah. Yep. We need a policy.
So that's in, in relation to the, at the court this year, so before we get to it in August, so that's kind of a crude, you know, look at it, but you can kind of get a sense of how far away from the court it's, it's gonna be cited.
I mean, yeah, granted.
He's, you know, one of them, it's over.
No, no, absolutely.
Or far and away from any, any type of physical activity.
Ground will crack the coconut pretty fast.
Absolutely, no, absolutely, yeah, it's, it, it would be, you know.
And the, I mean, this, this, we, we wouldn't probably address this tonight, regardless of what we do, but, um, the, the, the Jesse McDonald, my understanding is just gonna be a wooden street sign that you're proposing.
Yeah, so, I can example that as well, it's kind of a wooden thing.
Technically, it goes to, back to the general fund, I don't know, so.
Well, it, it needs, it needs sustaining requirements, I don't think.
Correct. And, and, and it's important to note, because we, we are, we have talked about the funding sources, that's what they want to do for Jesse, um, the, so gifts, monetary gifts, go, go to, go through the selectmen, and, and we have, we would have to queue that up, I believe, as a separate agenda item, um, and does, it goes to the general fund? Can, can they, can they earmark to, designate to, to projects?
No, 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 gifts absolutely go, yeah, gifts can be specifically.
We just have to rubber stamp them.
Yeah, gifts, gifts come into gift funds to me.
Yeah, has, has to be tracked, in the bottom line.
Yeah. We, the town has many of them.
But it's in the general fund, right, I mean.
No, no, it's kept separate and apart, it's, it's, they're kept in a separate tr- set of trust accounts, um, and, and, and again, and.
But it's in the general?
Well, yeah, it's on the town side.
If, if, nobody spent from those funds, and they got liquidated, it all go back into the general.
Unless there's, unless there was some.
Unless there's stipulation.
Stipulation to them.
And, and, and the way that the REC work, I mean, I don't want to get into this, so.
Well, revolving funds different, the gift accounts are different than revolving funds.
Right.
Yeah. This, this isn't the place to do it.
No.
Nope.
No, but the, the el- the ultimate question, I think where Jack is going with this, is if you're spending twenty-five thousand dollars out of revolving fund, that, and on a, a semi-permanent structure, it needs a definition of capital.
It does, and the reason, it's not because of what these guys are doing, right, it's because over time, people forget the process for doing this, and you end up having all sorts of, you know, off, off-the-books projects, I, I mean, we have somebody who's really responsible running REC, and he does a great job, but we know what happens when we have people who aren't that way, we end up having to, you know, in hindsight, go back and dig it all out. No, off-the-books projects are. As, as, as somebody who spent ten years digging it all out. I hate to see it all, you know, it just slips back.
No, and, 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 and this has kind of, we've, we keep adding to it, so it's probably something, the, the full project and the, it's, the.
This has gone through many iterations because of the look of Haddock, you know, and it, there was a prior gentleman, whose name I'm forgetting, he was the, the direct, athletic director of MIT, he was on the.
Right. Right.
Uh, he was the, yeah, the, he was the.
Uh, uh, Dan, um.
Dan, yeah, 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 and, and he did work on it, and then it pivoted to a different look, and then, you know, so, and then there's a question about the lights, and lights are not cheap, when you do it.
Dan Martin.
Dan Martin.
And there, and therein lies the point.
Yeah, so, um.
Right. So that's something, in terms of the overall project and the expense, which the monies have been appropriated.
And that public works is, they're, they're fully engaged in public works now, nothing is going through without getting fully engineered and vetted, and saying, what's it really gonna cost, and how do we fund it, before we even get to funding sources.
And the full project can be socialized again.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I, I mean, we've got a, that's not, we have, there's no problem with having a, a final project vetted through, um, uh, capital or any other.
So, pulling us back in for tonight, and what we have on our agenda, and what we can do, uh, there, there are two things, we, we have discussed in general the need for memorial policy, we'll just keep moving that forward to another agenda, where we can have a real fulsome conversation, look at some others, um, they're, like I said, they have been in our packet, so we can kind of bring those to bear sooner rather than later, and, um, come up with a policy, the next question is whether the board is, um, is able to make any determination on this, this specific request tonight.
Um, in the absence of a, of a policy, as Jack was pointing out, it becomes ever more difficult to arbitrarily reject, and also becomes more difficult to arbitrarily accept.
Except, I agree.
Um, I, I would propose that we, um, direct temporary placement of the memorial at the cited location near the basketball court, um, permanence to be determined by future actions of the board, and I, that sounds like a, forgive my French, a chicken shit way out, uh, but there's a reason for it, and that is that we do not have a policy.
I agree.
And therefore, citing permanently is, I think, um, effectively endorsing the wrong message.
Yep.
Uh, but denying it is just as importantly endorsing the wrong message, so at the, at the very least, um, the logic behind this is.
Gives the board time to straighten it out.
Yep.
It gi- yeah, it gives, it gives, well, it actually gives a future board time to straighten it out, um, hey, your problem now, and just as importantly, gives some public, uh, recognition to, uh, to Mr. Hanka.
And because there's a whole crew of people that want to put benches up on the common, you know, we've had to say no to them, and they're, they're on fire, you know, uh, it's just gonna be an issue politically.
Right, I, I, absolutely, and that's, you know, that's, that is my fear, in, in terms of, I would love us, for us to get to a point where we craft something where we're getting benches where we need benches, and my god, get rid of that crappy furniture that somebody just dumped on the common, it drives me crazy, um, but I don't want it, I don't want all of our open space to become, you know, memorials, let's just leave it at that, so, um, with, that was a motion.
Um, move, move, move that we approve temporary citing of the requested memorial, uh, at the one hundred Sawyer Street basketball court location as requested, permanent citing to be, uh, determined by future actions of the board.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, uh, and my only request again is just safety, you know, um, especially with the stone bench, we've had a lot of issues with playgrounds, and having to re-everything,
Yeah.
Absolutely. Every.
Every playground in town to, at, at a very high cost, so I want to make sure it's far enough away that it's not considered part of the play area.
Right.
Yeah.
Does this need action?
No, we don't need action on that, but, but I, I do think we, we need to have action on that before you start your permanent layout.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, before we start putting things in the ground permanently, correct, yes, excellent, thank you.
Right, yes, okay, great, thank you, and, and.
Okay, then, then annual contribution.
Well, I think that's a gift acceptance that we'll put on a future agenda, and, and I do want to say to Mike, thank you for your patience, because this. Well, I think that's a gift acceptance that we'll put on a future agenda and, and I do wanna say to Mike, thank you for your patience, cause this has been a conversation that's been a long time coming, so.
Thank you very much, I am very armed being the last meeting.
Thanks. With these guys.
Dr. Gomer, it's, it's, it's kind of a very special.
It sure is.
Doesn't happen often.
Uh, not, not often enough for, for a few things, so.
I know, I know, this really is the first time we've lost two members, um, at one time, at, at least that I've been on the board.
Voluntarily. Voluntarily.
For eight years voluntarily, no, but we haven't lost two at the same time, even not voluntarily, great, thank you very much.
Voluntarily.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Take care.
All right. So, next up is land disposition policy, so, um, again, this is another one of these moments where we, we realize we need to do right by, um, our charges selecting, which is a policy.
You all have a hard copy in front of you, this was also electronic, they're circulated, um, so this, this was distilled from all of your comments that were distributed, um, you'll recognize some of Steve's language, uh, in the beginning and, and, and all these other points and others that you already raised. Um, I, I also took the skeleton from policies that are already circulated from Ipswich and Littleton and Wayland and then, um, adapted them to our particular circumstances, for example. Uh, I mean, I left, for example, we're gonna have to complete a form, it's a very specific form, A, that they use in Ipswich, we haven't created a form, it's, it should be some kind of a form, um. The, um, and, um, you know, we've just adopted open space, uh, an open space recreation plan, we're gonna have a master plan and a harbor plan, so I put reference to that, so those should be cited when people are looking at a potential disposition of property. I also think that after having looked at this, I think we have to keep a disposition and an acquisition policy separate, I think the disposition policy can inform an acquisition policy, but I think they're just different animals. So after this is adopted, we can, I can swing to an acquisition policy that, uh, cause it's just a different mechan- kind of mechanism for that.
Yeah.
Um, and, though I think some of the core philosophy in this would, would probably inform it, um, so, um, there's, um, again, the scope and introduction are, are, uh. Adapted, uh, oh, the introduction is really from all of yours, um, adapted and tweaked and, and the principles or principles that you all laid out. Um, the procedures, um, again, were, were kind of adapted from ones that already work and then tweaked to a cohesive format, so, and it, and it deals with th- uh, three kinds of land, uh, sale, uh, or disposition, I should say. Uh, sale of town-owned land that's owned by a fee, the town owns it as, as an entity, uh, tax foreclosure land, which is different, and then, uh, land of low value, which is typically also tax foreclosure, but it's. Usually little just strips of land that have no other, they can't be built on, um.
Like that piece of property down on, uh.
Yeah.
On, uh, on Jerusalem.
Down at the bottom of Bow Street. Yeah, 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 so, well, unfortunately, nothing on Jerusalem Road is considered land of low value, only because of Jerusalem Road, even if you can't build on it, um, that's a unique circumstance, so if that was anywhere else in town, it would, and I, again, that has no buildable value anyway. And that's actually coming to a conclusion, but we actually don't have on that, um, but there's little strips of land that the towns acquire for one reason or another, um, and, and those are, so this just mentions it here and, and, and something that we should be looking at periodically, cause who knows, maybe get attached to a existing conservation land or maybe, you know, maybe, uh. The goal is to put that stuff back on the tax rolls, same thing with most, uh, tax titled property, which is what a tax foreclosure property is, most of that you wanna put back on the tax rolls, uh, by the same token, something may be very valuable, be able to, we flip, like the NOH Jerusalem Road property that has potential for other uses. So it's important that we look at those, and a town doesn't acquire them often, um, and, and Paul and Roff has done a great job cleaning it all up, we know what we own, and we actually have title to them now, um, we did have one property that.
Except for that beach street.
Well, that's, yeah, that's an old one, so that, so with that, right, that's one we're cleaning up, um, anything that's in the, in the last ten or fifteen years has been cleaned and we know, we know we have, that goes back much earlier than that. We have one where we actually took title to a house and the owner finally realized that they had paid their taxes and immediately came to pay us, so we made a lot of money out of it now, but that would've been a great, that would've been an affordable housing opportunity or something. And I, we didn't understand why the owner hadn't paid, because the owner just had forgotten, yeah, so, um.
They've been, yeah. Those interest rates are high too.
Yeah, they are, they are indeed, um, but sometimes a tax titled property has value, it could be, um, something that could be used, whether it be kind of for conservation purposes or it could be used to, as a, as a lever for something else, so it's worth taking a hard look at those. Um, but the, um, and again, dispositions are, are, are defined here specifically as, um. Where do I put it, um, it's broader than, um. Uh, sale, transfer, grant of any ship, any ownership interest, including easements, lease rights and formal ownership, so it's not just a sale, it could be an easement, it could be a lease, when I say lease, I mean lease over a property, uh, you know, some of that kind of stuff, um. Um, the, um, it's, uh, uh, cause easements could really.
Really?
Mr. Gorman.
We're done, all right.
Good afternoon, Kevin.
A motion to adjourn?
Yeah, I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn, has anybody, so here, it's here, if anybody wants to, I, uh, make any, I mean, again, it's, it's, you can do whatever you want to, it's just, it's down to format to be able to do it.
It's great, I mean, it, it's great, I, I, I just, there was one, you know, the goal is, uh, transparency of process, right, and, and that all interested parties have an opportunity to respond to this kind of a transaction. That, I, I, you know, I think for me that was the goal of doing this, so, in the spirit of that, I was thinking that, um, you know, you're gonna notify the abutters.
And any other individuals or organizations with interest in a set property, which may, I, I don't, that's pretty broad.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking about, like the Cohasset Conservation Trust.
Right, I think there would be a regular kind of, or the, the, there's the land trust, there's the conservation trust.
Yeah. Yep.
Um. The land fa- I mean, so the, the land foundation, it could be, uh, the open space and rec committee, uh, or if there's any other organization in town that might be doing it.
That potentially could.
The Affordable Housing Trust.
Yep.
You know, um, entities like that, so, and we probably create a little list and just agree that everyone gets notified on a regular basis.
And, and, and just, just for those paying attention at home or in the audience, um, a lot of what this requires is, you know, the requister completes a form that you mentioned, Chris, and then. Um, and then there's a sort of a subcommittee that looks at this, including somebody from advisory and capital budget, town manager, director of planning, and they provide the selectmen. Who in most cases, or in some cases, can actually make these decisions on their own, they don't always require town meeting action, but they provide, the subcommittee would provide a report to the selectmen that would address whether the property has been identified for use in. Open space and recreation plan, master plan, so there's all these sort of data points that we would get to inform our decisions.
Could you, and you do control the warrant, so, and, uh, you know, the town meeting would almost have to, would have to approve of most other sales that are tax titled property.
Mm-hmm.
And you then say, well, this is already easement.
And again, this is just disposition, Paul and then Steve, okay, Steve and then Paul.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Paul and then Steve. Exactly, the, yeah, the one thing which I thought was a relatively reasonable idea is the sale of town-owned land or the sale of property taken by a look of low value.
Yes.
Any sale would be to consider a super majority of the board's liking when they decide to do that, because a sale versus acquisition, acquisition is pretty easy and straightforward, but the sale always worries me that. I think you'd wanna have, like, having a treaty in the, in the senate, you wanna have a, a real strong reason to sell it and a, a good defense of it with a, a super majority, like, it's not, I mean.
No, you, it had been mentioned, I didn't know quite how to.
There is a.
Because.
I can't.
Because we gotta differentiate, I mean, what can we sell that would require a super majority of the board without going to town meeting, which theoretically is just a recommendation to town meeting, which would need a two-thirds vote on something like this.
Um, tax, tax titled property that's under the treasure collector's jurisdiction.
We can dispose of.
Can I, can I make a suggestion, is that, and that the, the, the mechanism, which is effectively what you're talking about, Paul, is separate from a policy and the mechanism can be set as a separate structure. The, what I, what I found beneficial in this draft is the, the, the structure of the process, um, that the, there's, there's a basis and a purpose behind considering it. And then there's a process for any applicant to go through, that, that is then put forward to the, you know, the subcommittee for study and that subcommittee is made up of representatives, not of the board, which I think is useful. But, and over which the board has some input, so there is a, there is a, um, a connection for the voters through that subcommittee, but we have the appointed, uh, um. Uh, advisory and, uh, capital budget committee, and then likewise, we have the expertise coming in from the, the, uh, the town entities, town manager, planning director, treasure collector and anybody that they need. Finally, and Chris, I think it's worthwhile, if you don't mind, enumerate the duties of the committee's report.
That's what I was.
Uh, okay, so, well, I mean, the process requires, um, that there'll be a public meeting scheduled of the committee, so people can come to the meeting, so it's not just a private session, so it'll have to be posted, uh, as a public meeting, it'll have to be posted. Uh, on, the committee can, can consult with any other boards or committees, part of the process, the affordable housing, alternative energy, whatever that may be, um, a body proper notice had to be notified as well, and as any organizations that are interested, and again, those can be defined. Um, and public comments can be, can be submitted, um, and then the, the, um, the, the analysis has to include a description of the property, including its current use and any structures. The assessed value of the property as well as a formal appraisal is required, and again, that depends on if we have one already or, you know, how, the, um, all current and foreseeable public uses of the property. Whether the proposed disposition achieves an established community goal, such as the creation of affordable housing, again, that means if the sale, it, it will end up, of course, it's providing open and recreation space, supporting the town's fiscal health. Supporting or enhancing the provision of public services and/or protecting the overall quality of life, those are all from the comments I will have you raise. Whether the property has been identified for use in the open space and recreation plan, the master plan or the harbor plan, neighborhood and environmental impacts of the sale or proposed uses of said property. Alternatives to title transfers such as easements, I haven't got leases, but, you know, anything like that, any restrictions or covenants to be placed on the property that should be considered prior to sale or as part of any purchase and sale agreement, so you might wanna say, you can have which can't be built, you can have, you know, house or whatever. Other identified advantages and disadvantages of disposition, I mean, that's could be very unique, it's pretty open-ended too. A recommended action, and that's the final piece, a recommended action, taking into account all of the information described above from a long-term, thirty-year perspective, so, look at it generationally, so it's not just what you need it today. Uh, is a foreseeable, I mean, do we know there's a population bootcoming and we need, may need a piece of land for a school or, I mean, um, whatever, the, the, the seas are rising, we might wanna keep that for a meadow, maybe that'll be the new town doc, you know, I, I, you know, um. Uh, whatever, you know, town pool, town pool, you know, so, so it's a, it's a pretty, um, it's a pretty comprehensive.
I agree. Yeah.
That's good.
Which, which, by the way, again, I, this was adopted from all of your comments, plus work that Ipswich did, plus work that Littleton had already done.
So what action do we need to take, Diane? Do we approve it for draft?
You, you could, um, and then, and by the way, this also was informed by the advisory committees, I did read the entire, um, uh, co- um, submission they made and the spirit of what they asked for is all in here too.
Yeah.
Um, because again, you were really on the same page anyways, it was just, you just, you, you used different language, but you had the same goals.
Oh.
And in fact, I think the introduction, which was adapted from the things you also noted, and, and then the guiding principles are also, they were really echoed in the advisory and, and again, those were. Uh, uh, for the, the principles, the purpose originally stated for the property's acquisition no longer applies, maybe it's bought for school and you're not gonna build a school.
One, one of the, uh, just little technical questions I had, I have two questions, um, just language-wise, um, the purpose originally stated, do, do we need to add or imply, because there may not be a stated. There may, there's probably a lot of land that we have, or little slivers here or there, that there's no.
Stated use.
Well, I think you could just, you could leave it at the purpose, the purpose for the property's acquisition.
Purpose.
That's fine.
Okay, there you go, right, and it may be, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know, we just got it.
And then the other question I have is a legal question, um, and I will take comments from the audience, so, don't worry about it, um, is, um, in the first, the very first sentence, the, the policy established in the set of procedures reported in the press, it says, uh. A disposition of town-owned real property, and does real property encompass an easement, is that considered real property?
Well, you can, yeah, you put an easement against real property, I, I expect real property because that, that's, it's not equipment, it's not a truck, it's, it's, it's land.
Okay. Right. That's, that's what I was asking.
It's a legal term for the dirt.
Yeah, it's, it's.
And it includes.
And easements convey with the, the real property.
Yeah, and same with the conservation restriction, so if we wanted to lift that, for example, that would be a disposition of a town-owned real property.
That's all. That would be, that would be an extremely difficult thing to do.
Correct, I, I'm not suggesting that, but just that literally would be.
Or placing one, placing one is really a disposition, removing it is.
Okay. Yep.
Removing it is.
Correct, yes, you're right.
You're gonna do rightaways?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, some of those, by the way, some of those are done by matter, matter of course, but you, maybe the town needs one because you wanna run a little road, or, yeah, right away is kinda like an easement.
Yeah.
Easement.
So, I wanna, um, ask.
It is, it's a form of an easement, right?
The selectmen for any, sorry, just let the selectmen have a conversation if, um, if everybody's questions are answered for right now, yeah, then we'll have.
It is.
Yeah, let me just, I, um, does this protect properties that have been, you know, used, um, you know, that have a lot of historical, social, um. Uh, 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 benefit for the town, I'm thinking, for example, the American Legion building, is this, does this sufficiently protect a building like that?
Well, so.
From not, in other words, from not being disposed of just because the building could be sold and more money made, I would wanna make sure that those kinds of structures, and we probably have others than that, are, are protected in this.
Well, I, I think, um, uh, I, there, there, so, i- in section, so, uh, section six, uh, of the, I, I guess I probably should, we probably should have under the procedures, uh, each sale should be given like an A, a B and a C, just cause I didn't put those in there, but I should've just.
I'm sorry, each?
It, so, for example, there's three different kinds of sales.
Correct, oh, I see.
Uh, so, make, make, make the sale of town-owned land, non-tax foreclosure is A.
Well, there, yeah.
Make the, uh, tax foreclosure property B and make the land of value C, only because there's numbers underneath them and it'd be easier to cite them that way.
Yeah, the, the A sale or the B sale, yeah.
A, A one, yeah, exactly, so, uh, Kevin, under six, um, uh, one of the things here is, uh, protecting the overall quality of life.
And D? Where's this one?
Um, and six, uh, on page, well.
No, I'm at six to work.
Right, so, so, indeed, where the proposed disposi- disposition achieves an established community goal, uh, in, in, supporting or enhancing the provision of public services and under protecting the overall quality of life, someone can say, hey.
Six D.
That doesn't predict the overall quality of life, it's, you know, if, if you, for example, the CSCR happens to exist in a town-owned building, right?
Right.
Um, so, i- i- that, that use could be considered part of, you know, you, you need to take that use into consideration and, and comment, it says, education of the property, including its current use and any structures, the very first thing you, you talk about, so you have to disclose right up front. Well, yeah, we have this building on Park Avenue, it's not vacant.
How wonderful for you to say that whether the proposed disposition achieves or is detrimental to an established, uh, community goal in that way, they just, they weigh that. So that you get in that, that weight factor, gee, to, gee, to take this building that's used by the historical society, that would be detrimental.
Well, and if you look, if you have I, go down to I, other identified advantages and disav- disadvantages of disposition, is that, is that catchall enough?
And, a little bit, but I'd rather put the simple words in whether the proposed disposition achieves or is des- detrimental.
Where, where, where are you?
On that D, six D, so it's just as a consideration that they have and, so that, I just wanna try to prevent, uh, Steve, so that in the future someone doesn't say, hey, I got a calculation here that's pretty brilliant, we can save seventy-five thousand for the town. Let's dispose of the nursing station, you know, well, it just at least have that as, as part of the weight.
Yeah, but, you, by the way, let me just, a- a- as a matter of setting the policy, I understand your point, Kevin, as a matter of setting the policy, um, I, I suppose it's, we could begin to look around and say, what do we own, what could be poached? And in the absence of a policy, I think we're much more exposed to such an event, um, and with one, we have a basis for review on, and, and accountability for that.
And, and to build on that, as we have with other policies, we run it, a couple of instances occur, then we modify it and approve it, so, it just gets us going, but could you add that to D?
Right.
Yeah.
I have no objection.
Yeah, I, whether the proposed disposition achieves or is detrimental to.
That's fine.
Right, okay, yep, I got it, and we already, I, we struck the language and the guiding principle originally stated, cause I may, uh, suppose it was, and we're adding A, B and C to, through the subsectments.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Tom, ahead.
I mean, if it comes out, if we decided to sell town commons or apartment garage, um, that would be.
Someone could say arguably.
Or, or a cemetery, you missed the memorial.
I think that's detrimental.
And that allows that whole interest group to be able to express themselves under that clause and.
Right.
Right.
So is that a new initiative of the new selectman, uh, turning the, uh, town common into a parking garage?
And like Boston, you mean, you mean putting, like Boston, putting underneath it?
No.
Well, you would, that just causes too much blasting.
That's a big story.
No, and I, 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 I just wanna publicly state that nobody's talked about selling the Legion, like, I don't know where that came from, like, no, I know, I know, but that was, that's.
Well, it ca- it came at the town meeting, so I wanted to address it.
I've never even heard of such a thing, so.
Well, actually, it also, though, came up at one of the forums, uh, on the harbor plan, a couple of citizens brought it up there, it came up at town meeting, so it should be contemplated in this that we're not talking about.
Okay. All right. Like.
Those are citizens who have never hoisted a beer at the Legion.
Yeah, yeah, well, that's exactly what I was saying, I was thinking, well, good luck with that proposal. Yeah, yeah, well, that's exactly what I was saying, I was thinking, well, good luck with that proposal.
I'll tell you, I'll tell you what they haven't done, they've run for political office.
I thought I was gonna say, like, th- this board has never discussed such a thing, so it's just, can we all agree on that one?
But we didn't.
There you go, that's the right.
Okay.
That's what happened.
So, um, does the board feel comfort, well, I, I did say I'd take public comment, so if anybody in the audience, you have to come up, sorry, introduce yourself, people at home.
No, I'm not sure. Uh, Tom Kelly, I'm thirty-five Hillside Drive, I'm here for the Open Space Committee, um, we haven't seen this yet, um, you know, as a shameless plug for our committee, it does say in the Open Space Plan, we would be involved in some way in the process of dispositions of property, especially with the impact focus case. So I was wondering if we can see this, uh, we're meeting Tuesday, and I can promise you, we'll address it on Tuesday and get your feedback next Wednesday. Um, but this, one concern I have is, that I think our committee would be concerned about is, when you're evaluating the value of a particular piece of property and whether you dispose of it or not, I think there should be some consideration also, and not just to that property itself, which may be big, may be small, but what is the impact on adjacent properties?
I think it's in there.
It is.
Yeah, that is.
I don't know if that is in there, I have not seen it, but, so, because obviously, a property that the town owns could open up something else to development that we might not want to develop.
One of the clauses is, uh, one of the things that has to be assessed is neighborhood and environmental impacts of the sale or proposed uses of the property. And, and there's two, and also, you, there's a specific requirement that you look at the Open Space Recreation Plan, and to see if the parcel is mentioned at all in that plan.
Well, we haven't mentioned any specific.
Oh, there's a lot of specific parcels mentioned in the plan. So, I, I, and, and also, there's also a clause in hand that says, uh, the committee members shop and sell this property and any boards or committees are part of the review process.
I just, if you, you know, it's up to you, if you're, if, if you don't mind us taking a look at it, and have a comment back by next one.
No, I, well, this is one of the, the areas that I do have an issue with, uh, with respect to disposition of land. The Open Space has a, a specific charge for their committee, likewise, so does, so does affordable housing. Now they think about it, Recreation does, and so on, and so on, and so on, and it is this board's duty to recognize all interests have been addressed, but it's our policy to formulate. And while I appreciate the, the ideas that will come forward, it's high time we adopted a policy, as opposed to pushing it off for another four months, getting everybody's.
And I think the process is clear enough that we're gonna get these issues, it's gonna, it's gonna be very hard for people not to participate in this process.
Well, having not seen it, I couldn't answer to that.
Yeah, no, no, I get it, Tom, I'm not criticizing.
You good?
That's it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Um.
And also, this is a policy, we're gonna review this over time and see how it reacts, and make the options that need to be adjusted,
Yeah, well.
and things that show up that are not on the policy.
Well, an example is, uh, uh, specifically is the, uh, um, the action item that you brought up, you know, how do, how, what's the mechanism for voting it in, I mean, that's gonna have to be adopted at some point, or addressed at some point.
Right.
So there are, there are changes that will undoubtedly, uh, force this to evolve as is necessary.
Um, I'll, hi.
Charlie, I can say one fifty-nine Atlantic Avenue, I'm here as trustee of the Cohasset Conservation Trust. We have discussed this before with you, and this sounded like a very open and, and good policy, I haven't read the whole document, but thank you very much for raising this and making sure that, uh, adjacent, uh, property owners are thoroughly informed of what's going on. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Can I get a copy of that, uh?
No, I, the, the minute, it's, it comes, we've adapted, no, we'll, we'll get it posted on the website too, yeah, and Tracy will get it.
Have to find the, the owner.
Yeah.
If they adapt it tonight, then you will have an available license, so.
Very good.
Yeah, so my, uh, my.
Thank you.
Um, you're welcome, thanks, Charlie, um, you know, I, I think that we, we heard from two different boards, both advisory and, um, and Open Space, that they wanted to, to help us, and that, that was, I, I think their understanding was that they would have some, um, at least opportunity to provide input, um, so, I, I'm of two minds right now, like, I, you know, strike while the iron's hot, and this is a policy, and it's, it's something we can edit uh, and change as early as next week if we wanted to, but I also, you know, do know that other boards wanted to, wanted to weigh in and, and anticipated they would have the opportunity to do so. So it is a public meeting, and we're discussing it, so, I'm, you know.
Whom were those two boards again?
Advisory and I believe Open Space.
And wanted to look, they did wanna look at this?
Yes, the understanding was when we pulled one of the, uh, citizens petitions off, the warrant, that they, you know, they understood that they would have an opportunity to, to, now, the, the truth of the matter is, advisory had it on, had not an agenda, discussed it, sent us a very comprehensive.
Advisory asked to give input, they did so two and a half, three weeks ago in writing, and.
Yes, and it, and we took it into consideration.
Now, that, that was definitely informed this time.
And it was at a period of time when it was roundly discussed by the board, so anybody else who was interested already put it also.
Yeah, yeah. Throwing it all out there.
I, I, if, if the board, uh, uh, looks at the draft in front of them as a, 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 a suitable infrastructure to initiate, then I move that, uh, this be adopted as the introductory land disposition policy.
What's some of the changes that we've discussed?
I'm sorry, with, with amendments as discussed.
Okay, is there a second?
Sorry?
Okay, all right.
I mean, again, this is a policy, this can be, it's not bylaw, this is not, I mean, this is, you know, this is the pathway.
Change.
Yep. That's good, okay, all of those in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay, nice, got it done.
Well, that was good.
Right, and again, I was just putting the facts out there, I, I wanna make sure we make informed decisions too.
No, 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 that's, I, I appreciate it.
I appreciate it.
Um, okay, uh, we are now going into executive session, um, I'm gonna read the executive session, and then we'll take a vote. Um, executive session for exception number two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions, or to contract negotiations with non-union personnel. Exception three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares, I do declare, we will be discussing the town manager, police chief, fire chief, finance director contracts. We will return to open session and, um, for the remainder of our agenda. Um, is there a motion to go into executive session?
So moved, moved.
Is there, second?
Second.
Also for the, uh, we're, we'll go into executive session, but come out to finish the meeting.
Okay.
Should be, I'm on.
Did I say that?
I think.
Oh, I said, oh, I thought I did, sorry, all right, Steve?
Aye, Steve Gomer, aye.
For, I appreciate it.
Jack and Ily, aye.
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Paul, you're right.
Kevin McCarthy, aye.
Okay, we are now in executive session. Open session, um, the, um, we have a couple of contracts to, um, vote on, and I put my agenda away. So the first one is an amendment for, um, the contract of Don Piatt, the finance director, Piatt. Um, so is there a motion to approve, um, the edits to the contract of Don Piatt?
So moved, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, the other ones were just updates, and we have also, um, uh, discussed a, um, a twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-three contract extension for Christopher Senior, and we would like to, um, I'd like to have a motion to approve the employment agreement between Town of Cohasset and Christopher Senior through January twenty-twenty-three.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all of those in favor? Oh, roll call vote, sorry.
Aye.
Aye.
Vote.
Yeah, Kevin, sorry.
So, we should just specify that we're approving the contract which we just amended and the one we have before us.
Correct.
That's correct.
Okay, so.
Roll call vote.
Kevin McCarthy, aye.
Paul, you're right.
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Jack Keniley, aye.
Steve Gomer, aye.
Congratulations.
I wanna thank you all, it's been a real pleasure, and it's, you know, I look forward to more years of, uh, great accomplishments. Thank you.
Likewise, thank you.
Look forward to it.
Um, so we have the selectmen, uh, town manager.
So I just wanna, uh, thank the board, I particularly wanna thank, uh, Jack and Steve, uh, Steve for six years, uh, and Jack, well, actually, for six years too, because I work with you as the chairman of the Capital Budget Committee, um, uh, it's been a real pleasure, uh, we've achieved a, a lot of things that were on your list long before I even knew what Cohasset was, um, and.
We got almost all of them done, I think.
Yeah, we, we've, there's been a tremendous achievement tonight, another policy, uh, a very big policy, that, that was a, there was a hole, and it's been filled, uh, I think the most important, well, the most important legacies, uh, that you leave are, are the fact that we're on a path, and we've made tremendous strides on that path, and, um, uh, i- it's been a great, uh, it's been a great experience. There've been times that have been challenging, there've been times that have been intense, at the end of the day, though, they've all been very productive. And, uh, as a result, the, the town is in much better shape, um, and I've been grateful to be part of that for the past, uh, five and a half years, and I look forward to being a part of it, but, um, I'm sure I'll be working with both of you as time goes on, because all selectmen never, they leave the, what is it?
They never die, they just fade away.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know if you fade away, you just find another committee to serve.
Right, oh, we, we got them. Yeah, I was gonna say, we have them queued up for appointments next week.
Yeah, so, uh, but I do wanna thank, uh, uh, both of you for, for the, the, all the time you've given to me, the support, the, uh, the insights, and, um, and I, again, I, I thank you very much. Thank you.
Yeah.
So.
It's kinda hard to follow that, but I mean, I do echo that we are losing two people with probably, uh, almost forty years, thirty-five or forty years of experience, and I gotta say, you, you guys, your contribution shows it, both not only your really bright minds, which I've come to respect, admire, and like, uh, but the experience that you've had and learned, as you've grown, and I've known you for a number of years, I've seen you grow, and the, the town has benefited from that, and working on board has really been a personal pleasure for me, and a professional pleasure for me, and just as a comment that it isn't just you two, I mean, you two is what we have made as a five-member board, has really been a unique experience, I, I, I belong to organizations before, and, as we all have, and we as a team, the five of us, including Chris, we as a team really have a special chemistry, in case you didn't notice, and as strange as it may seem on the outside, but we have, we accomplished really great things for this town, and, uh, I really hate to see that stop, but life goes on, you guys have to, you guys, you all have to, life goes on, but it's really been, as a board, and what you, of all, all five of us have made of it, has been really special, so.
Thank you very much.
Alan, so I'm gonna reiterate that, um, I've thoroughly enjoyed working with the two of you for many, many years since, for me, it's twelve, I pull over thirteen, um, it's way better as on Capital Budget when you're here. I wanna reiterate, Kevin said, I, I thought this board has really done an awful lot of work, um, a little bit of, uh, you know, back and forth, but I think we only had probably two or three votes, there were one and five oh, or four oh, the time, it was four oh. But, um, we got an awful lot done, and it, it took a lot to get it done, and I think you really put a ton of effort in this town. I need to, I need to keep doing it, um, even if you're not on a board anywhere, uh, the town needs good people to, to do good things, and I think you've, you've done that.
Thank you again.
Yeah, thank you, Paul.
My turn, um, and I, I'm a much better writer than I am a speaker, so I'm gonna.
So you wrote me a card?
Uh, uh, I, I, I didn't yet, um, I know you did, and I've been, uh, very busy, but, um.
I did. You got a coloring book.
Yeah, I, actually, I have been spending a lot of time on the coloring book, that's a good thing, um, s- you know, obviously, we're, we're all kind of summing up the same thing, I have been deal, dealing with and working with, um, Jack and Steve for eight years, um, and in those early years, it was almost daily, um, because we were, um, we were.
You were.
We were struggling, we were, you know, the, the boat was, the ship was not, uh, um, properly moored in a, uh, in, in the harbor, it was not a safe harbor, um, and so, I, I, you know how sad I am, I really am sad. It's, it's been a personal pleasure, it's been a professional, uh, joy, uh, serving, um, you know, Kevin said that the chemistry, I think, that we have as individuals, um, has really worked, and we've been, the five of us have been at this for two years together, and that's the, this is the first time there's been a, the same board two years in a row in my recent, you know, in my, both my service and also prior to that, um, in the recent time. So, um, I wish you both well, and I know that, uh, one of the reasons we have two more meetings in May is so that we can get some of these other committees filled out, um, and, and then, of course, June comes along, and that was the thing I was gonna mention tonight, for anybody that's still watching, is that, um, it, it is that time of year where we're all looking for talent to send us, uh, applications, we have a talent bank, as it's called, on, on application forms, and please send those, and I, um, we're gonna be making sure you guys don't get too far afield, um, in terms of your service for the town, that's something that just never ends, so, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Diane.
Thank you.
So what do you guys have to say?
Well, I'll, I'll go, um, it's been an honor and a pleasure to serve, I just think that representative local government like this is a gift from the founding fathers, there's nothing else like it in the country, and it's been my honor to serve with, I think, arguably, the best board of selectmen and town manager combination the town's ever had, and I just wanna echo my deep respect for everybody on this board, and the way we've handled ourselves over the last three years, I think is, the last six years has been just spectacular, you know, we've, we've straightened out problems people don't even know we've had, and we've done it, we've just gone to work and done it, not looked for the glory, and I think that's, you know, it's, 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 I think it's from the deep respect we all feel for each other, and this is real good governance, in my opinion, and I, again, it's been an honor to serve, and I'll see you guys, I'm going over to the harbor committee, so you'll see the, uh,
The next meeting tomorrow night.
when I go over there, so thanks, again, thanks, it's been an honor, and stick around, I wanna take a picture of everybody.
Okay.
Um, and for me, it's been a privilege, been a privilege to, to, to sit in this chair and to, uh, ask, uh, citizens for their vote just as each of you did, uh, I remember the very first introduction I had to, to being a selectman, and, and the, the comment that came from that, uh, that person was, each of you were elected by the town as a whole, so none of you has any greater opinion than the other. And i- i- watching this board in particular work, uh, and, quiet down there, embodies that, because we did have arguments, we did have ver- uh, uh, distinct differences of opinion, and we did reach resolution. And i- i- I, I do have a different memory of yours, we did have several votes that weren't exactly the same. But that's exact, that's, that's how a unit like this is supposed to work, and I frankly will miss it, I, I, I really will, but it is time to, to move on, when I go back and look at the accomplishments that this body can chalk up for the town, the list is long, whether it's, uh, you know, building acquisition, or what was uncomfortable at the time, pushing back to the state, saying, no, we want a better-looking outcome on that bridge, to four years of, of, four consecutive years of growing, uh, free cash at the end of, at the closeout of a budget, which is a testament to, uh, some efficiencies, and, you know, and then we take a look at what we're able to expend for the town on its own improvements, all, recognizing where our weaknesses are, as is, uh, as with the policies that we've been missing, and that's a testament to no single person, but rather to the body as a whole, and that, as I said, and wrap it with this, it's been a privilege, and I thank you each of you for that privilege.
All right. Are there two sets of minutes of, to move and approve?
Make a motion to approve the minutes of five fourteen two thousand nineteen, board of selectmen, Cohasset.
Second?
Si- uh, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
I move we approve the board of selectmen minutes for town pass five twenty nineteen, uh, two thousand nineteen.
Second.
Oh, all right. No, those are the upcoming meetings, those aren't.
We're moving to the future.
What's going on?
We're moving to the future.
I have no topics recently.
Give you guys all this praise.
Let me, I wanna make this motion.
Move to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.